So we're gonna call the meeting to order at 7:04 PM. Meeting of Montpelier-Roxbury Public Schools Board of School Directors. First item, we'll get it out of the way, and it will be very short, is a public comment. Okay, no public comments. So tonight, I'm very pleased to have Mike DeWes here, former superintendent who, I believe, worked with Grant previously, and is now working with the Vermont School Boards Association to help school districts do what we need to do, which is find a superintendent. So I think what we'll first do is we'll just do some quick intros. I can also tell you who's not here. And then you can introduce yourself, Mike, and then I think we're gonna largely turn it over to you for Q and A and guide us through the search process. I also do, I think in order of action related to this, is I have talked to CQ Strategies over the last couple days.
And you're gonna explain who CQ Strategies are?
I'm going to explain these strategies.
Okay, yes.
CQ Strategies has worked with the school district and other school districts on cultural competency and diversity, equity, and inclusion issues. I've explained our situation to them, that we have a tight timeframe to find a superintendent, but that cultural competency, casting a wide net, getting a diverse pool of applicants, and making sure that we find a leader who's also going to advance the district's already, I think, very admirable work, but very complete work. And that field was a high priority, both for the board and for the administration, and I think for staff, and certainly the community as a whole. And asked them if they could help us with a tight timeframe to give us suggestions to do as much as we can do in that timeframe. And they are excited that we're talking to them and excited to help. And they're gonna give us a draft plan and some ideas on Monday, and they're willing to do some contracting throughout the process. And I explained to them the timeframe we're on. So it'd be good to have a motion just authorizing me to work with them and to work out a contract with them for services. I'll have an estimate that I can bring back if you wanna give me a range. I don't think it's gonna be terribly much, but I mean, they will want it there. So that's a quick kind of a business that we can either deal with now or we can deal with later.
How about if I make a motion that you work with them to develop a contract that you would bring to us the next board meeting?
Sounds good.
Does that sound reasonable?
The only question is, do we wanna have them start doing work before May 2nd? And are we gonna...
I would like to amend that contract.
Okay, so I take that motion back. I'll make another motion, let's see. I make a motion that you just work with them and be reasonable.
I thought we set a limit.
Grant doesn't want you spending any more money.
Okay, never mind. I was going to suggest that we give you the ability to work up to a cost of $10,000 without having to come back to the board for separate approval, something like that. Why don't I make a motion that you work with CQ Strategies up to a cost of $10,000 to assist us in superintendent recruitment?
You have a second?
I'll second you.
Any discussion? All is in favor? All right. So now we'll go with introductions. Mike, you and I have talked on the phone and emailed, but I'm Jamerke, I'm the chair of the board. In my real job, I'm an attorney and Vermont advocate with National Wildlife Federation. I work currently on climate energy issues, and I've been on the board, well, I've been on this board since it was formed in October, and I'm also on the Montpelier Public School Board, and I've been on that board since a couple years now. Let's go this way.
So I'm Lisa Frost, and I'm Roxbury resident. So I've been on the board since we organized in October, and I do quite a few things for work, so I'll save that for another time, but I'm pretty passionate about education in general, so.
Thank you.
And I'm Becky Bowe, and I was elected March 17th to the Montpelier Board and transitioned into this board. My children have come up through the Montpelier School Systems, and I'm the Human Resources Director up at Central Vermont Home Health and Hospice.
Great, thank you.
Sorry, still taking minutes. Ryan Zajak, I'm also a Roxbury community member. I've been on the Roxbury Board since 2013, went through the merger process, and I'm here now with the new board and moving forward.
Great.
Hi, Mike, I know Mike from a past life, and I'm retired now and have been on the Montpelier Board and now was on the merger committee, and now I'm on the Montpelier-Roxbury Board.
My name's Peter Sterling. This is my third year of service on the Montpelier School Board. Around 2000, I also served on the Doty School Board up in Worcester at K through six, small school with 68 kids, and then in my professional life, I'm the Chief of Staff to the President and Pro temp of the Senate.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, and the three people who are not able to make it because of, I think all because of their, except for Michelle Trembling, for spring break is Bridget Assey, who's our Vice Chair, Michelle Braun, who is currently the Chair of the Montpelier School Board, although she was smart enough to kick that to be for this board, and Steve Hinchen, who I believe is in New Mexico.
Thank you. Go ahead of it.
Yours.
Thank you much. I appreciate the brief introduction. Mike DeWes, been in Vermont since '77. My entire education career has been here in the state. Retired in 2013 after 36 years of service. Twenty-four of those years was as a superintendent or assistant superintendent in two districts, Franklin Northeast, based out of Richmond, and at the time, the former Chittenden Central District, based out of Essex Junction. And that's where Grant and I have some wonderful, warm memories of good years working together. I've done different bodies of work in retirement, all elective, all by choice, and it is rewarding for me to choose projects or decline projects based on whether or not I think I can be helpful and useful to the organization. My work is mostly in service to school boards and superintendents, so I work with both the VSA and your VSBA. And I have done other administrative searches in the past. This is the first time I've done it through VSBA, so Nicole Mason and I certainly have a close relationship, and I have the official binder, the official set of guidelines here to work from. So I think of the binder as perhaps being the science of the search, and hopefully I'm gonna bring a bit of the art and flexibility and dynamics to it, so that's my role. What I'd love to do is just talk with you tonight about a few things, but then really work with you tonight on making some decisions, because as you can appreciate, you're about to embark on a really important decision point. And I think it's especially timely for you, based on the official transition of your consolidated district starting up on July 1st, so there's just rich opportunity for you to be thinking about starting officially, moving from your transition board status to your official board status on July 1st, as well as perhaps having a new chief executive slash superintendent working with you at that point in time. It is not, we have not found it to be statewide or nationally, quite frankly, an easy task to land and secure superintendents. Pools tend to be small, and that's just the way it is. We have not seen the depth of numbers, at least in pools, like we did even perhaps two decades ago. So the times are changing a bit, and that's just a reality of what school boards face these days in terms of going into the marketplace, looking for superintendents. Your situation is compounded, as you realize, by where we find ourselves. It's April 19th, it's just a little later in the game than is often the case, but I don't necessarily feel it's too late in the game. I think there's still a window of time here, but that window of time's gonna require a sense of decision-making, and I would urge you tonight to really think about the timeline and timetable, and I will be detailing that more for you in terms of what that looks like, how things unfold, and what their relationship looks like. I am not your headhunter, I'm not picking your next superintendent, that is not my role. My role is to help shepherd the process, and you will have me working most directly with a screening committee that you will name, that you'll appoint, and that'll be a group that will really run through the first level of vetting, in terms of looking after the applications, looking at folks through an interview procedures, and then recommending back to you some finalists for you then to consider. So on the front end, you'll be charging that committee, you'll be giving that committee some direction and guidance, you'll really inform that committee about what you're looking for, you will impart from your board staff that committee, so hopefully it'll be a couple of you that'll actually move from this board onto that screening committee as part of the process. And I think of this in a bit like a reverse engineering process, and that is, we know when you want your new superintendent placed, and that is July 1st. That would be the ideal, is to have your new person, have him or her start on July 1st. That backs the whole timeline back up again in terms of what that then means. If he or she is currently in a position elsewhere, he or she's gonna need time to transition from their current position to a new position here. You recognize you've got your high school graduation the end of the second week of June, and there's probably a logical window to think about trying to wind things down, wrap things up. So for you to be thinking toward potential appointment with a successful search in that second week-ish or so of June, that would be the end game of what this process could look like. That's gonna require an expedited process. That's gonna mean we're gonna keep things moving in order to make that happen, and again, I'll be happy to lay that out with you in terms of what a recommended timeline can look like. So tonight, I'd like to spend some time with you talking about more the details and nuances of the search process. I'd like to talk with you about the roles, your role, my role, the role of screening committee. I'd like to have you identify a salary range that you would publish as part of your advertising recruitment materials to inform potential candidates of what the salary range could be. I've got some recommendations on that. The heavy bit of business tonight is going to be to approve vacancy notice, and that's really content-rich, content-deep, and it's fundamentally your assertions of what sort of qualities you want to represent the district as possessing, as an attraction for candidates, as well as what the qualities of your successful candidate will hold as he or she comes to the conversation. We'd like you to define a couple of essay questions, and the essay questions are questions that would accompany the application itself. So you get a chance to actually see some thinking in that sense, you get a chance to see some writing styles in that sense, you get a chance to appreciate the responses to a couple of key questions that you think might be really pertinent for folks to respond to through the application process. You'll help me define tonight the breadth and scope of advertising. I'll have some thoughts on that as well, but I can give you some ins and outs around that. We'll want to talk about your search process budget, and I hear Grant over my right shoulder saying, yes, we wanna be sure we've got that down. We definitely want to have good knowledge up front about what sort of the anticipated costs could be, and to have you affirm that in the front end. Should we go over that budget, we're gonna wanna have a process for you to be able to assemble and to be able to approve thereafter future expenditures which may go over the budget, which I don't anticipate, but I heard earlier certainly an action point that there may be other budget considerations that I hadn't really brought to the table tonight, so we'll want to figure out a way to fold those, those sort of costs in. The screening committee is really owed a charge, a specific charge, that know what it is they're supposed to do, how it is they're supposed to do business on your behalf, what it is that they'll be doing and how they'll be doing it, and that'll be a written charge that we'd like you to approve tonight, as well as your defining the membership of that committee. The membership of that committee would be defined two ways. One, by the total number of seats on that committee, and second, how to divvy those seats up, what sort of constituency groups are gonna be represented through the screening committee process. And I will not recommend that you do anything more tonight than a couple of things around that. One, I would hope that you can set the charge tonight for that committee. I hope that you could set the number, total number of seats in that committee. I would hope that you could figure out tonight with me how to divide up those number of seats among the constituency groups, but it's premature tonight, I think, for you to actually name names. I think that you wanna think about a process through which you can solicit interest around that. The last thing you wanna do tonight is name names of folks who may not wanna be there, you don't wanna leave out folks who might be really valuable to the process, and I think that's a conversation point for this board after I leave tonight, and after you leave tonight, to think about how you wanna tackle that task, and that doesn't have to be done by the weekend. Like, I'm gonna encourage, some of these things do need to be done by the weekend, but that's one of those things that actually could wait a little bit. As well as adopting the search process calendar, so the calendar really will be the driver in this conversation, and I'll have some thoughts about the calendar as well. So, does it sound like a fun night?
Mm-hmm.
Which I'm said by all, about ready to jump in here.
It's okay.
Any questions on where I think we might take this meeting and what sort of things we all wanna be tackling? Good so far?
Good so far.
Nobody has grabbed their car keys yet, that's a good sign, I like that. What I wanna start with is a, thanks, Grant. That's great, thanks. Do you have a handout? I do, thank you. This first handout is an overview of both the roles of the various parties in the process, as well as a high-order sequence of what the responsibilities would be among those parties. So as I mentioned, you're in charge, you're driving this bus, you should drive this bus, it's your job by law to drive this bus, you're in charge of the decision about owning the process, as well as the decision point at the end. Think of me as your guide on the side. I'll be working with you at times, I'll be working with your screening committee at times, so I will be the one most connected to the various elements and aspects of the process, and that's really my job, is to help just shepherd the process along as you prescribed it. Then the screening committee is a formal committee of the board, and I'm sure you've got other committees that you work with now that you charge as part of your district work, or perhaps that'll be work that you're coming up on, but this would be a defined formal committee, it'll be representative of various stakeholders, and their job is to satisfy the charge that you're going to lay out for them. They're gonna do the job that you ask them to do fundamentally. And their job is not to decide on who they like best, that's not their job. Their job is not to vote on their favorite candidate, that is not their job. The job of the committee is to figure out through criteria that you've laid out, which candidates best match that criteria. They're gonna do it through a paper screen of the applications, they're gonna do it through selecting some of those folks for first-round interview, they're gonna undertake those interviews, they'll do reference checks on those folks, and from all of that information, their job would then be to remand to the board, hopefully up to three finalists for you to consider. So that's the objective, is for them to take the body of applicants, and from that body, get in their mind, through your charge, through the expectations you've outlined, the three best they think would fit your charge. They're not gonna rank them, they're not gonna say, here's our number one, here's our two, here's our three. It's here are the three, here's what we can tell you about the three, here's what we think the collective best three are, and then it'll be your turn to then receive those three, and to then go through the process of making some decisions. So the board's job is to identify the desired qualities of the next superintendent, and I'll have some draft thoughts for you to just react to tonight. Again, you're gonna set the charge for the screening committee, you're gonna identify the budget tonight, and at some point in the near future, you're gonna name members to the screening committee itself as well. So, school's on vacation this week, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, so clearly, next week at the earliest is when you probably wanna start to get after, you know, your promotion of this opportunity. Again, the screening committee's gonna paper screen all the applicants, they're gonna select some semifinalists to be interviewed by them, and following the reference checks and evaluation of those semifinalists, they're gonna get to you a list of ideally three folks for you to consider. And three is ideal, three is probably enough for you to manage, and hopefully we can have up to three. That would be, that'd be great. Then it comes back to the board again, okay? So the screening committee's been doing its work, you now receive these three finalists. Your job is then to organize the big day, and the big day typically for finalists means coming for a visit to your district, getting a chance to visit your schools, getting a chance to talk to personnel, making themselves available for a public forum, so that parents and citizens can come out and say hi and meet them, and just hear a few things, and maybe even give you a little feedback around their impressions of those folks. We probably oughta feed and water those folks, that'd probably be a good idea if we did that, 'cause it's gonna be a full day for them. And then they'd be interviewed by you likely in the evening, one by one by one, so you'd see all three in the same evening, and that would be a perfect schedule for that, that day. And once you've interviewed all three, you then deliberate over what you've seen. If you think you need to further vet one, two, or three of them, you would do that. If you think you're ready to make a decision, then you make a decision. But again, I'd be working with you at that step of the process as well. And clearly, there's work afterwards, too. I mean, as you know, there's always future work for a school board. But after you've hired your superintendent, there's other decision points. I mean, part of the hiring process certainly is the contract details with that superintendent. Part of it is to affirm that superintendent's entry plan, and I'm a big fan of formalizing the entry plan, so that the incoming superintendent clearly understands his or her, the expectations of him or her, they understand expectations of you as well, and it sort of becomes a compact of what that entry relationship is between the superintendent and board, to really get things off on that perfect right step. And in the most ideal of worlds, that then leads itself directly into the evaluation of that superintendent in his or her first year in terms of the delivery and execution and performance of that entry plan. So he or she will have notions of how they wanna start, you'll have notions of how you think he or she may be ought to start, and what some low-hanging fruit is, what some of the stretches might be, what some of the initiatives and priorities could be, and those are sort of things that get married and embedded into an entry plan. So that's work that would occur after all this. And then VSBA does offer some joint training to really hit the ground running again, so that the board and superintendent relationship is off to the very best start it can be, and that's a shared training that comes at no charge to you through your membership with VSBA. So those are sort of down-the-road things after the fact, but we need to get there first, that's our jobs, to get there first. So does the process at the high order here make some sense, Becky?
The process makes sense, I just have some housekeeping questions after you.
Absolutely.
How effective do you think it is to go beyond just doing a Vermont or Northern New England search, just that ineffective, should we, if we decide to do that, should, is that something we need to do from the get-go? Do we wanna go outside of the area, or?
Yeah, hear my thoughts on that? My thoughts are that the required process through a VSBA search means a defined application approach.
Yes.
And the defined application approach is called SchoolSpring. It's an electronic platform by which folks submit their applications electronically. It enables the screening committee and the board to review things electronically of these candidates' submittals. And the cost for doing SchoolSpring is the same cost whether you're thinking locally or nationally. So it is a national platform.
Okay.
It sounds like you're familiar with. And because of that, we've been finding that that is the single best way to draw a candidate pool, is through SchoolSpring. Now, there are other national opportunities as well, many of them at no cost to you. Many of them come by way of the National School Boards Association, through the Association, American Association of School Administrators, in which they have classified ads of sorts, typically online, that typically come without cost. So there are ways otherwise to get the word out beyond the state. I don't see a good reason to narrow your search to an in-state search only. I think that you're gonna cast a net, we might as well cast the net.
And you construct your mission and vision statement within the search documentation to encourage people to apply that might not otherwise be just within Vermont.
Exactly, yeah, precisely right. And certainly in-state, we've got other vehicles, other means of communication to sort of get the word out as well.
Sure.
There are other networks certainly in-state within the region that we tap into. So that would be sort of taking care of both needs, both the in-state as well as national need through the use of SchoolSpring. That's gonna cost you about, Grant don't quote me, $350 to do that.
That's it?
Yeah, yeah, it is. $350 would get you about one line, one column inch of Boston Globe, is that something about right for an ad? Is that pretty close? Well, it gets far into Boston Globe, that kind of money. But it's, yeah, you can certainly do New York Times, you can do Boston Globe, you can spend the big bucks if you choose to with their classified ads. We just haven't seen a return on investment with that, we just haven't seen that to be a really smart way of trying to, you know, get the pool broadened. Now, there may be other venues through your consultancy that you're considering, that there might be other pipelines, other venues, other avenues, other approaches, other connections, other networks and so forth, that we could also expand it to. I'm anxious to learn more about that myself, so that'll be interesting. But Becky, my advice to you would not be to just think, not to close out any options, I guess is what I'm saying.
I agree.
We might as well cast the net possible.
Already there.
Good, okay.
Already there, yeah.
And there are a number of successful Vermont superintendents who have come here from out-of-state. I mean, there just are. It's a unique state, the laws are specific to Vermont, the culture's specific to Vermont, but it's not unlearnable, it's absolutely achievable and doable, and it's not unheard of for out-of-state candidates to be successful with in-state positions, so that ought not be something to worry about at this stage.
I think with that enough.
My hope for you, my hope for you...
We'll have good candidates, I hope.
Is to really get as broad a pool as we can with, hopefully some depth in that pool as well. So breadth and depth of a pool would be just the perfect match for a search.
Absolutely.
I'm sorry.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, yeah.
And I'm sorry, another housekeeping.
No, the fire away, it's good, it's helpful.
So the behind-the-scenes work, the reference checking, the travel arrangements, the bringing people onsite and all of that, who does the, who does that? I only ask because, you know, the people that work within the district office already have full-time jobs, and I mean, this is going to take a lot of hands-on work to conduct these background checks and to do a very thorough reference checking on it, is that something that we should look outside of the district office, or how does that work?
I've begun a conversation with Tracy and Heather and you, Grant, and my purpose in those conversations was to learn your landscape a little bit.
Okay.
To see what level of support exists within your central office, to see what the expertise is. Typically, central offices have somebody who plays point with SchoolSpring, and you do, her name is Heather.
Okay.
And Heather's ready to talk with me about the work hopefully that we accomplished tonight, ready to put that into motion, ready to get that SchoolSpring ad posted.
Okay.
And once she does that, I'll need one other favor from Heather, and that is to give the keys of, to SchoolSpring, to the members of the screening committee once they're named by you.
Yes.
And at that point, Heather's pretty much hands-off of the SchoolSpring responsibility that becomes then your job in the screening committee, screening committee's job first, your job second, to then make use of those materials.
Okay.
So that's one example. The screening committee, I'm gonna recommend within your charge that they be responsible for the primary reference checks.
Yes.
That that be part of what they do, and that we give them adequate time to do that as well within committees, so it's gonna all gonna be part of this timeline that I'll lay out for you tonight. The copies you're holding right now are compliments of work that Tracy took care of for me today, so I think there are ways for us to figure this out, and my, I've worked in a central, I've worked in a couple of central offices, I understand exactly what you're asking about the concern and interest here, but not overburdening folks, that's my interest as well.
Okay.
The volunteer work of your screening committee, that's heavy lifting. Those are folks who are gonna wanna be at every meeting, those are folks who are gonna wanna be ready to do their homework offline, those are folks who are wanna be committed to this interest, so I know you'll be intentional and thoughtful about who would you name, eventually named to the committee, but those are the folks that'll be doing a lot of the work.
Yeah.
In terms of the, looking down the road, maybe you're thinking about that as well, Becky, like the final day, site visit day and so forth. Often, that's a divided responsibility, typically, often a principal will sort of play point with one of the candidates, another principal with another candidate, and just sort of be their shepherd for the day, set up the schedule, certainly I'll be communicating, I'll be the one communicating with correspondence and so forth with the applicants and semifinalists and the finalists, and that's all work I'll do on your behalf. So that won't fall to you, that won't fall to your central office, that'll be work that I'll be just tending to, that's part of what you're paying for me to do, frankly.
And last but not least, community involvement in the screening process or in the, at what point do you see community involvement? Is it from the very beginning, or at the final interview, where do you see that coming in?
I see it as mission-critical, I see it as essential. I also see it with respect to limitations of the timeline. So places where I see community slash parent involvement would be with membership on the screening committee, with well-informed opportunities to meet... with well-informed opportunities to meet the finalists and to have a chance to visit with them, to have a chance to provide you with some of their feedback about them. And, 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 and those are some key opportunities I would think for, for folks.
Okay, good.
Jim?
Thank you.
Yep.
Hi. We use a policy governance model here on this board. How critical is it, do you think, we hire someone who's got experience with policy government?
Hold on. We actually have formally adopted, this board has not formally adopted policy governance. And I know that we are gonna formally adopt it. I think we're gonna do a governance by policy model.
Okay, never mind.
I have a question. It, it doesn't say here, which doesn't mean it's not being done, either the screening committee or the board, how often does somebody from this district go to the other person's district for an interview? In other words, for a visit at their district?
Oh, where they are now, for example, yeah. In a process where you've got months and months and months of time, you can go visit as often as you want to. We'll look at the calendar tonight and see how feasible that might be. It, it, it may be possible, it may not be practical, it's one of those sort of conversations.
Well, no, depends on where they are.
It depends on where they are and what you need to know and what you need to hear. And, and what the best ways to get that information.
But not impossible.
Not impossible, no, never, nothing's impossible, nothing, nothing, nothing's impossible.
Sure.
Ryan?
Just, so a general question. So this is my first superintendent search.
Congratulations, you're gonna earn your stripes on this one.
Keep getting told that, no, this is such, it's so different, it's so different. You guys are in a unique position right now. And not having gone through this before,
Yeah.
how is it that unique? I don't have a personal comparison. So can you give me kind of like the ideal world? Like if we were doing a superintendent search in the ideal world, you know, what would the timeframe be in terms of when we were applying? How is it gonna be that different? Obviously, we have a tight timeline, there's no denying that.
Yep.
But overall, like what are the big things that are gonna be unique and challenging for us to address?
It is, I'm gonna talk about the audience of administrators in general as I start my answer. Thinking principals, thinking central office folks, thinking already sitting superintendents elsewhere. Those folks at this date would already be under contract if they're working next year already somewhere. Searches ideally would start middle to late winter, and that would capture that window before they're perhaps coming back under contract or could be released easily from contract. So we're a few months behind what I would consider to be the ideal, ideal window. That's part of the answer, I'm not sure I'm fully answering your questions. Just nudge me again with.
I mean, is it really the timeframe that is our biggest challenge? I mean, are we really living ourselves?
No, no, your, your biggest challenge is the pool in general of superintendent candidates. That is the challenge that you and everybody on the board faces. Yours is just, the wrinkle you've got is, is the timeline. And, and, you know, we might as well talk straight up that this may not yield a satisfactory result. You may not be okay with where this ends in June. And, and if that's the case, you might have a sense of that before then. And if not, you'll be making decisions in June about what that all means. It's, you know, not the worst thing ever to think about other opportunities, whether it be short-term interim, longer-term interms, you know, that's, that's, that's a fallback position. I certainly don't advise you to start there. I think that's potential opportunity lost by starting there. So, so there's that. I'm aware of another district in the state this year in which I believe three individuals satisfied the board's interest. One by one, offered the job, and one by one, turned it down.
That's painful.
So there's that. Which is why we want to be as earnest and as straightforward and, and honest about representing who you are, what you want, what you're looking for, and what a match would look like. This is a marriage of sorts that you're talking about. I mean, the nature of the board-superintendent relationship, again, from a superintendent bias, I've never done what you've done, I've never sat on the school board, but I have sat in superintendent's chair for more than a little bit. It is absolutely mission critical that that be a strong, solid relationship for the health and well-being of the district. And that that's responsibility of both parties, but it's all about the match. And I'll give you my little, my little spiel, I guess. Can I, can I keep talking, is it okay if I'm doing?
Go for it, yeah.
As you're getting to know my talker, I guess. The
That was very helpful.
There, there's an old body of research that is as ancient as a day, as long, that talks about person-environment fit. And the whole research is about skilled people can be very successful in some environments, and the same person can fail in a different environment. And it's all about matching that person with that particular environment. And is there, is there a dovetail of skills and experiences and opportunities and relationship and all those sort of good things? There are sitting superintendents that may be interested in this position. And, and I would not offhand discount their candidacy. It, it may simply be that matter of person-environment fit, and this may look to them to be a better fit than perhaps where they are now. So I wouldn't discard that as a potential sub-audience of your candidate pool. I would encourage you to be open to, to those potential candidates. I also direct the Vermont Superintendent's Leadership Academy, and it's in its fifth year right now. And that's an academy where we invite aspiring superintendents into a year-long academy, and we expose them, introduce them to the world of superintendency. And what we've found now in our fifth year with the academy is that it has become something of a pipeline for the superintendent feeder system, if you will, that a whole bunch of those folks who have been through the program have continued to aspire to a superintendency, and have actually landed in in-state superintendencies. That has become another venue, if you will, through which folks are, are approaching the superintendency. What's kind of nice about that is they get a chance for a year to meet superintendents, talk about superintendents, think like superintendents, experience superintendencies, and decide whether or not they're really in the game or not. The last thing you want is to hire a rookie superintendent and find out that's really isn't the game for them after a month or two in the job. That's, that's, it's a lose-lose situation for everybody, so. Anyway, that pipeline does exist, and I'm hopeful that we can exploit, you know, that opportunity as well to think about first timers that might be, might be applicable to, to your situation as well.
That was actually my question, is how, how is the evaluation process different for someone who's coming in with superintendent experience versus someone who, you know, maybe is a principal or a curriculum director or assistant superintendent, and this is their next step? Are there different things we should, I assume there are different things we're should be looking for, but what are those different things?
Are you referring to the evaluation of their candidacy?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Clearly, they need to come in talking superintendent speak, whether they've done it or not. I mean, you, you need to have confidence that they are indeed ready to, to assume this level of, of their career evolution. So I would not necessarily modify the questions that you might ask of them, but you're gonna have to appreciate the experience differences that perhaps they bring to the table. I mean, it's, it's no different, any sort of industry, you're looking at experienced folks or inexperienced folks to that industry, so. It's a niche of the industry, there's no job quite like the superintendency. And the principalship isn't the superintendacy, but a whole lot of superintendents have been principals. I mean, it's, it's a very natural pathway for career growth. Lisa, how we doing?
I'm good.
You've been question-free so far, so I'm sure you're okay here.
I know, I'm looking at your list here and
I have more lists, there'll be more lists coming. Okay, to move on?
Yep.
All right. What I think we need to establish next is how you want to advertise, thank you, Grant, for your salary range. And I've compiled some data for you on superintendent salaries. And if you're, if I cheat, you can go down to the bottom of the page, you can see the bottom of my recommendation. But going through the chart, these are all current-year data. And as we look at all superintendents across the state, there are sixty of them that were surveyed. The average salary this year for those superintendents is a hundred and twenty-four seven. And the asterisk refers to, that's inclusive of Montpelier School District superintendent salary. So that's in there as well, in that average. The average years in position, in that position, current position for all Vermont superintendents is a little over four. The average total years that person's been a superintendent is a little over five. So that's the mix that statewide you find superintendents in right now. Now, you can shred that in two different ways, and shred that into two kinds of districts. One's a supervisory union district, one's a supervisory district. Yours has been a supervisory district in Montpelier. Yours has been a supervisory union in Roxbury. You are becoming a supervisory district on July first, so we've got that technicality down. So this next one perhaps is more relevant to that audience of districts, if you will. So the Vermont supervisory districts, there are eighteen of those this year. Average salary there is a hundred and twenty-eight thousand. A little higher average years in position, four point eight three, and a little higher years of total superintendency at six point six seven. Then you look at the supervisory union folks, a bit lower there, one twenty-one, again, N of thirty-seven. A little fewer years of experience, a whole lot more years of total years of experience. I guess when S U's find superintendents they like, they wanna keep them, I guess. But my recommendation to you, based on those data, is that you set a ten thousand dollar range, from a low of a hundred and twenty thousand to a high of a hundred and thirty thousand. And that you think about that range a couple of ways. You think about that range based on qualifications, you think about that range based on experience. And that those are reasonable attributes to, to attach to a salary range for applicants thinking about whether this job fits their needs. That's exclusive of your benefits package that you traditionally offer. That would be salary-only.
Very generous.
Becky?
You know I'm gonna ask this question.
Yeah.
Is it too tight and is it too low?
My question.
Well, you've got a budget for next year.
We do.
I see Grant.
For, for what it is that we want to attract and knowing that, you know, so, I'm asking.
Will it limit
Yeah.
potential candidates?
I, I, I will tell you that that's, in my mind, low average.
It is.
Not below average, but low average. So it's, it's average, just maybe a little low average.
It doesn't, it doesn't preclude that somebody coming that, for some reason, we think has experience or something of being at the upper end of that or even of
But is that candidate going to apply with this limitation?
I don't, to be honest, in this, in this superintendency, I don't think that money is going to be exactly the top thing.
But if they're relocating with the family, it will be.
Maybe. People don't come to Vermont for the money.
Well, that individual coming in at a salary of, low of one twenty is right in the ballpark of where S U superintendents are this year on average. That person comes in at one thirty, they're very close to the average for S D superintendents. So I, I think it's legitimate, I don't think it's unreasonable.
And perhaps relocation is carved out as a separate benefit or something.
And, and that's a conversation point. And Becky, maybe a way to couch that as you represent a position is to say anticipated salary range of one twenty to one thirty. Perhaps as a signal that there's a way to, you know, you might be a little flexible about that.
Peter?
What, what would be the disadvantage of just advertising it as one twenty to one sixty? This way, we, we don't have to pay anything. I mean, true, if there was a fantastic candidate who was meeting all of our dreams and could solve all our problems, you know, for this kind of district, we have money, and if, for the dream candidate, we could pay more. I mean, we'd have to meet the criteria. I'm just saying, I don't know what the downside of advertising that there's a bigger range.
Or even to one forty.
One forty or one
I mean, pick a number that would attract someone who's truly exceptional. Because really, in, in my mind, in a twenty-three million dollar budget, whether you pay someone, you know, a hundred and thirty or a hundred and forty, to get the right person would mean the world to us, to get a, a really great candidate. So why not advertise and have, and have more people coming in by having a bigger range and then, you know, winnow it down from there?
I like the word anticipated, in front of the range you've given. I don't think it'll limit the number of people we get.
Yeah, but what's the downside of putting a bigger number?
I actually, in my experience, have to respectfully disagree. I know when we're recruiting, where we, people do look at the upper limit and see it as the maximum. In their heads, okay, for five years, I'm gonna be under this max. Whether that's legit or not, and they're moving with the family, I'm just, I don't see that there's harm done in popping that one thirty up to one forty or even a little bit higher.
My reaction to it is sort of the Lake Wobegon effect. And that candidates tend not to look at the low number, they tend to look at the high number because they know they're exceptional, they know they're special, they know they're above average, and therefore might expect that higher number. And it, it can make negotiation over final contract salary just a little more awkward for the board, if not sometimes impossible for the board, based on expectations on the front end, so.
It might oblige us to
How would it oblige?
Well, it might also signal to
It sets an expectation that
Yeah. It might signal to a candidate that, like, wow, we put the one sixty out there for the star candidate, and you're not it, which is why we're offering you one point six.
No, you're right, no, there is that.
That's what I mean about if, if somebody has outstanding qualifications for some reason, then you could opt your one thirty. But this way, you're in the range, and I think it's a reasonable range.
Okay.
I, I have a question about the range. How, Chittenden County's a different animal. How much does it skew? Is, is this, is one twenty to one thirty different if you kind of take Chittenden County out of the equation rather than, you know, putting it in the equation? Is this, is one twenty, one thirty, like, that's great for us out of Chittenden County? Or is that still?
Essex-Westford, in my opinion, perhaps the most complex district in Chittenden County is paying this year one thirty. Burlington this year is paying one fifty-four. Champlain Valley, who superintendent has been there a long time. One seventy-three. Colchester, one thirty-six. Montpelier this year, one twenty-seven. South Burlington, one fifty-nine. So yes, Winuski, one thirty-eight. Milton, one twenty-nine. Springfield, one thirty-four. So those are the Chittenden County numbers. Except for Springfield, which is not Chittenden County.
I mean, the, the other consideration with that is if we are is if there is a superintendent who feels this district might be a better fit, but is already in the awkward position of having to get out of a contract, and say they're making one thirty-seven and see this one thirty number, are they gonna say, am I gonna get out of my awkward contract and take a pay cut?
Well, certainly in your negotiation with an individual like that, you would at least meet their one thirty-seven if you wanted, because that's just the reality of it. But if you put it in here as
If they don't get to the point where they apply,
Right, if you don't even get that person, I know.
So is there other wording, like, with room for negotiation? Because you said anticipated is one, but are there other ways of wording it where there, it's seen as more flexible to candidates?
Would you be okay if I?
Thanks.
Please do, yeah.
First off, if, if I'm applying and it just says one twenty to one thirty, I would apply if I'm someone in that ballpark as worth what I could afford. I would not take the job if it was offered to me for less than one thirty because I know you can afford it, because you said you could.
Right.
And to me, that would be my starting position. So I appreciate the anticipated language, and I think that is probably enough gray language that people would understand that it might be a little less, it might be a little more. I would urge you to stay with ten thousand, I think a range of ten thousand is enough. Otherwise, it just gets too, you know, you know, ambiguous. I do want you to bear in mind, realize, we had zero dollars budgeted for this.
Yeah.
Zero. So in that first year, you know, I, I get twenty-three million dollar budget, but it's not twenty-three million, we have requirements, maybe we have zero budgeted for it.
It's already spoken for.
If you were to change this at all, I would say maybe you could consider one twenty-five to one thirty-five, which would put you, I think, where, maybe it's not as much lower average, but maybe it's more average than, but other than shifting it maybe five thousand, I, I would either go with this or shift it by five thousand, but I wouldn't change it other than that, just by two cents.
Can, can we do something, which I opted to see? Can we say competitive salary and benefit package commiserate with experience and leave it at that? Or is there an expectation that there's a salary range, a numerical salary range?
I, I would say because you're casting a wide net, that people might not know what that means in Vermont. So if I'm in California and I see commiserate with, I, I wouldn't know if that means a hundred thousand in Vermont or two hundred thousand in Vermont.
But could five seconds on Google give you at least an estimate?
Yeah, yeah.
I think it would be better to put in a number because out-of-state has exceedingly, what I said in the beginning, people don't come to Vermont for the money.
Yeah.
They're coming here, if they were a superintendent in Massachusetts, they're gonna come here probably with a pay cut. And, but they'd like to And, but they'd like to know the range of what that is.
There's also a candidate pool, not just from Massachusetts, but elsewhere, that could be at a transition point in their career, where they might be eligible for a pension in that state, and ready to leave that state and continue to work elsewhere. And salary becomes a different conversation for those individuals. It's not necessarily one sixty for them, it's enjoy your pension elsewhere and enjoy one twenty-five here.
You come to Vermont for various reasons, besides the money.
So we probably ought to figure out something to put in the.
Yeah, sorry to pull away with this.
No, I like the shifting of the five. Yeah, to go from one twenty-five to one thirty-five.
You like the fives?
Yeah.
Let the minutes reflect, Becky's a fan of fives. Shifting, that's right.
And including the anticipated. I like that as well.
Adding the word anticipated.
Oh, yes, adding it.
Do you have to approve these?
Tell you what, why don't you hold on to that for a second, and you can approve that with the whole next approval, which is gonna be your vacancy notice itself.
Okay.
Is that right? Thank you, sir. This is, this is great, Grant. So what we need is, we need some standard notice that can be used, umpteen different ways. Can be used in school spring, can be used on double essay job boards, can be used, something to pass out at state meetings, can be used through multiple purposes. So that is what this intends to do. The look of this, of the draft, is pretty traditional in terms of how things look. The depth of it is pretty traditional. You already know there's an edit on the last paragraph of the last page, which will now say salary range anticipated. One twenty-five, one thirty-five. Why don't you take a minute just to read through this on your own, and we'll talk about it in two minutes?
I was actually thinking you could put a sentence in here about Vermont consistently being ranked one or two best places to live in the country, or something like that.
Becky, if you've got the language, shall happen to use it.
Just put it right in there. Okay, I'll send that to you.
I should have brought my business cards. Do you have my email address?
It actually says it on the.
There is. Yeah, thank you, you're right.
Okay. Yeah, Mike, I'll send that to you.
So I now know you're hyphen free, so I can lose the hyphens.
That's right.
And that paragraph on Montpelier, it was borrowed liberally from your municipal website.
Sure.
So it was well-written, I just took it, quite frankly. This has been informed a bit by, I think, your administrative team, so some of this has come from their input, which I greatly appreciate. But it's an important document, and I want you to feel like you're pleased with it and are good with it, and edit it as you need to. So. Another example of where you're in charge.
I think it sounds great.
Yeah, I think it sounds great. For the Roxbury folks, we talked a lot about Montpelier, and I have one line on Roxbury. Should we maybe add another line or two describing that community a little more?
Wikipedia was a little light on Roxbury.
Yeah.
Not too surprising. We're a small rural community. Whereas, without going, right, without going into the cliches of small-town life, we're not gonna say a lot more than what's already there. So I don't think it's totally necessary to, I don't feel like we're being diminished by any stretch by having less attention devoted to us word-wise, so.
I did, I kind of wondered what local faith and wisdom communities means. Um, you know, like, sure, the first thing that comes to mind is like, a Christian church, but was that something that you found?
Right off the website, it caught my attention too.
The Roxbury website?
No, I'm sorry, Montpelier website.
Oh, it's on the Montpelier.
Montpelier municipal website. Yep. Homepage. But we can, we can lose that. I mean, this is your document.
Personally, I don't know really about what.
The church has a very small congregation.
In Roxbury.
Would faith communities do it? Would that?
Even that, I think, might.
Lose it? Lose a little?
I would, I think Montpelier has a more active, like, faith community population.
That wasn't intended, that wasn't intended for Roxbury, it was intended for the district.
It's rather a district. I think if you use one district.
Oh, residents of the district. Oh, okay.
But if that's not clear, let's make it clear.
For some reason, I didn't catch that, that that next sentence after the seven hundred residents was not about Roxbury.
New paragraph, or should we be more explicit about district, or what do you think there?
You know, what you could do is, you have the first sentence, then you say Roxbury is a town with about seven hundred residents, and then your next sentence starts with, Montpelier is a small town with big city amenities, or the capital district has big city amenities, or something like that.
So move Roxbury up to after eight thousand people, is what you're saying.
Yep, yep, yep. Contextually, that makes sense. Yep.
And then Montpelier's a small town with big city amenities. Give us enough time and we'll just crunch this.
It's good, it's all right. This is more for us, but, so, not lost on anybody, we were the first school in the country to fly the Black Lives Matter flag.
Yes, we were.
I personally wear that as, I'm proud of what we did. And I think somehow reflecting the fact that this board, this community, is willing to embrace leadership of really stepping ahead. And, you know, we want candidates to apply who are ready to do something big and bold and exciting, not necessarily as far as race relations, but anything. So I think there's, we could maybe get a theme in there that, even by mentioning the Black Lives Matter issue, we are telling candidates that we are very open to people who have exceptional ideas, and you may want to consider that.
You know, Peter was saying, the concluding sentence of the very first paragraph, the Montpelier-Roxbury School District is a newly consolidated school district. I feel like that needs to be expanded upon, and the theme that you're going with, new ideas and new leadership, and let's do big, new things.
And by even mentioning the Black Lives Matter, that's an example of, like, we're open to really interesting ideas that help give the kids an educational experience that is exceptional. That's what, that's what this is really about, right? We're, wanna hire someone who's gonna give kids an exceptional education experience at that price we get. And so then, but somewhere also in here, I wonder, given some of the emails we've got from parents, if we should say, we would, we want applicants who value diversity. And I don't know if we can be as bold to say this, but just maybe be blunt, we are a pretty dominant white community, and we need, what?
We're too white.
Yeah.
Okay, we could say that too. But by saying something about, because we're a dominant, predominantly white community, we really would value applicants who understand the importance of bringing diversity to all aspects of the educational experience. Like, we, you know, I'm not gonna fall my sword over this, but somehow mentioning an applicant who really understands the need to bring lessons about diversity in.
So maybe the number two, that says has sensitivity to issues of diversity, equity, inclusion, and cultural competence, just needs a little beefing up.
I would say related about, not just sensitivity, but it's kind of committed to leadership.
See, that's the thing, sensitivity means you've got a problem, there's a problem in the school, oh, I understand, that's what it means to me, there's.
Is committed to, that's what I'm saying.
Leadership, it's a leadership is what we want. Sensitivity is more reactive to me.
Yeah.
So, and I think we've heard from constituent people about, that this is important to them.
Yeah, and I was gonna wind while yours, but maybe you're standing on it and say, this, the district has been.
Is committed.
Is committed to, but also to say, other things too. I mean, we've been out front in personalized learning, we've been out front in proficiency-based learning. And we're the first district in the country to fly the Black Lives Matter flag. Maybe throw a sentence like that in, so it kind of gives a little energy to, that we're on the cutting edge of some things.
And really, we want a leader who's gonna help us develop those ideas, which we didn't always have. Like, some of the environmental initiatives we had talked about on the Montpelier Board never came to fruition, like moving to non-diesel buses. Like, we were, you know, we would do that a second if we can make that happen, and the community would love it. So anyway, thoughts, thanks, Mike.
So those are great ideas, and I want to incorporate them. I don't know how, wait a second. Would this be a good time for a five-minute board work session to just punch this up and mark it up and edit it? Would you want me to sort of take your remarks and try to fold them in here? You've got the language down better than I do around this important stuff to you, so I don't wanna compromise in any way what you want.
Let's take five minutes and put, because I really think, even though we talked a lot, I think it's like a sentence or two.
Okay.
One-page document.
Do you, while you're thinking about a sentence, do you think it makes sense to, you know, it says the district has four schools, and it lists four schools. With the discussion about Montpelier-Roxbury, do you think it's worth saying something like, the district encompasses the city of Montpelier and town of Roxbury, and has four schools, just to kind of make it obvious that we are talking about two?
Sure.
It's a hard thing, I was thinking as I read this, that's a hard thing to explain. So if you, to me, if you are in Vermont, you'll get it. You can Google it and you'll get it. If you're out of state, it's an anomaly, Vermont is in general, and this is another anomaly. You're gonna have to do some work to figure that out, because you won't get Roxbury and Montpelier, right? I mean, I was trying to figure out how to say that, I'm not sure how you do, but maybe that's a good thought of consider includes the town of Montpelier and the, or the city of Montpelier, what are we?
As a thing, if you're an outside person, you'd be like, well, the city is this and the town is this, my assumption would be the town is part of the city.
And Google Maps shows them here and there.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
So this is five minutes of board write time, is that where we are?
Yeah.
I think so.
The changes that the board is making is, first, removing the hyphens.
Yep.
Secondly, in the second paragraph, explaining that the district encompasses the city of Montpelier and the town of Roxbury, and has the four schools that are listed.
Yeah.
After Montpelier High School, they're gonna put a hyphen and state that that is the first school in the nation to fly the Black Lives Matter flag. In that following paragraph, we're gonna just strike the local faith and wisdom communities.
Yeah.
And then the successful candidate, number two, instead of saying has sensitivity to, they wanna change that to committed to advancing the issues of.
That's better, yep.
And then on the back page, where you have information about the district can be found here, about Montpelier can be found here, there will also be information about Roxbury can be found here, with a link to Roxbury.
Next, next sentence. It sounds great.
You're gonna make a copy of this, read this back to your.
You wanna wait to see the copy before you approve it, or?
No, we're done, yeah.
You wanna make a motion to approve the, what do we call it, miss?
Vacancy announcement?
Vacancy announcement.
So I'll make a motion to approve the vacancy amount, meant, meant, vacancy announcement, as modified by the board.
Second.
Well, it's in favor? Are they both?
Good.
How many folks have had the opportunity to work with the School Spring platform, anyone? So, yeah, you're right. It's really quite an impressive platform, and it was actually developed here in the state by a former school superintendent.
Yeah.
And is now the national standard, quite frankly, for school vacancies. It is, it's absolutely reasonable to work with when you're receiving the information. We're only gonna be dealing with complete applications, and on School Spring, complete applications means the following submissions. It means resume, it means cover letter, it means the opportunity for transcript background review, as well as up to two essay questions that they will respond to of your choice. So that's what I'd like to do next, is to talk with you about what those questions might look like, what sort of information you want the screening committee to consume. And obviously, once you get the applications of the finalists, you'll also get a chance to see the finalists' answers to those questions as well, so. Whole bunch of other questions get asked of the candidates. There'll be ten, twelve, fifteen questions during the first level of interviews by the screening committee. There'll be probably the same number or so by you of the candidates when you see them as well. But these will be a chance to have them commit in writing their answers to a couple of essay questions. So let me just pass out some examples and just see, see if any of these tickle your fancy. Except for the last one, number eighteen, I guess it is. These are all ones that have been used by other boards, so. Just in reinviting your will necessarily, we can at least look at what other boards have tossed out there. So I'll give you two minutes to read this as well, and then we can see if any of these fit your needs. Montpelier's, let's run the table, shall we? Who's a fan of number one? How many number ones do we have out there? Okay, who likes number two? Okay, who likes three? All right. Who likes four? Who hates five?
Yeah, kidding.
A little, yeah, yeah. How about six?
I like six.
We got one for six, good. Who likes seven? How about eight?
I'm down for eight.
One down for eight. Nine?
I'm there again.
Nine it is. Ten?
It's a good out-of-state question, but I don't like it, for here.
Eleven? Twelve?
I like twelve.
I said twelve.
I like twelve, too.
One, two, three.
Three.
Three it is. Thirteen?
I said thirteen, but changing the small, crossing off the small.
Just unique.
We can edit it, but you still like it, is it? So we got three for that?
Yep.
Fourteen? Fifteen? You don't get to vote. Sixteen.
I like sixteen.
I like sixteen.
Three and sixteen. Seventeen? Eighteen? Ooh, almost a home run there, four.
I'd say seventeen, but the way you treat them, I don't.
Oh, of course, the budget.
Well, with four of you at eighteen, we just use eighteen for sure as one of them.
Yeah.
Okay?
I wanted to say that I'm thinking about this as a general, as I think about general assessments. And since it's a general question, you want it to be open enough that you can see how somebody's gonna answer it. In other words, open enough so that you find out what they're really thinking.
So enough open-ended opportunities to learn. So we're lobbying for one over another, as you said that? Were you pushing for?
No, I'm just saying that as I looked at the questions, that's what I wanted. I didn't want any very specific. I might ask those if I was on the steering committee, but on a, for an essay, I wanna leave it open so that you can either wow me or hang yourself.
Tell you what, we're gonna focus right now on twelve, thirteen, and sixteen. Okay? Twelve, thirteen, sixteen? Pick the two you like the most. Twelve, thirteen, sixteen.
And for thirteen, we're open to maybe striking everything after challenging, I mean, 'cause it's not really s.
I would say unique should stay, but small and rural, maybe change, maybe leave out.
And do we, does, does that convey we're challenging? I'm, I think what it attracts to our job is comparatively, we're not challenging.
Yeah, and I don't like thirteen, so I can't speak to it.
I read that as, how do you, how do you create a, how do you create a community of learners that is both educationally inclusive and challenging?
Educationally challenging, okay, right.
So the small, unique, rural school, I agree, small and rural don't need to be around, no, if you wanna say unique. Because then it just makes it sound like it's the district that's challenging.
Right, that's true. Sure, exactly.
So no commas in there, Grant, just, there's both educationally inclusive and challenging, period.
That's the end, yes.
Yep, okay, let's make that how thirteen reads then. So you're voting for two of these, twelve, thirteen, and sixteen. Good to go? How many like twelve? One, two, three, four. Who likes thirteen?
We're voting twice, we're.
You, you, you're telling me you're two votes, yep?
Yeah, two.
Three, four, thirteen. And sixteen? One, two, three. So have we settled then on question twelve?
Yep.
And then question eighteen?
Twelve is nice and open, I think.
It's so open.
Any edits to those two questions?
Wait a minute.
Okay.
Let me think about that.
Yep.
I was, I was hoping to get a question in that had the word leadership in it. And so I was trying to think, could we say?
Well, I'm wondering if, here's, here's my thought on that.
But that's a good question, I'm okay with it now that I've thought about it, but that's what I'm looking for and maybe I wait and see if that's what I get.
That's kind of my thought too, I think both these questions invite someone to talk about their leadership.
Okay, yeah, okay. Okay, yep, I agree.
And if they don't, that should tell us something.
Yep, yep, got it.
Okay. So I'm going to embed these two questions in the process.
Great.
If you need to approve those, it's up to you whether you wanna formally announce.
Let's do it, just, no reason not to.
Yeah.
Motion to approve those two questions?
I think we approve question thirteen and sixteen and the, no, thirteen, sorry, twelve and eighteen, I'm sorry. I can't even rate twelve and eighteen in our advertisement for superintendent.
One second. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm opposed. Great, twelve and thirteen, or twelve and eighteen. We want twelve, right?
So let's have a conversation now about your budget for this body of work. And budgets for this stuff are just, you know, challenging because every search is different. Some searches you've got all-in-say candidates, some searches you don't, and then that, that affects cost. Some boards like to just, you know, shoot for the moon with all kinds of advertising, some like to sort of make it a bit more narrow and a bit more cost efficient. So what I've captured here are just costs that I think frankly is a responsible budget with the exception of, I just don't know, is it Q and R?
CQ.
QC, CQ.
CQs, strategies.
So that would be a cost that would either be separate from this budget or you'd wanna fold into this budget, I, I think is the two ways to approach it.
I think it ought to be separate.
Yeah.
Okay, the VSA contract is a fixed cost, mileage is an estimate, um, office expenses would be reimbursement to your central office if there was a need to reimburse for these kinds of expenses. Advertising, um, this, this is a big number and if you don't care to go hog wild with major city newspapers, it won't cost as much. This is a rough back of the envelope estimate of a whole lot of, in my mind, excess advertising. You're gonna want some food probably for the community forum when your citizens come out, you're gonna wanna pay for your finalists dinners and so forth when they're here that, that final day. Perhaps travel support for finalists, that's, you know, maybe.
Interspective, yeah.
Transition costs, if there's time ideally for there to be transition between your outgoing superintendent and incoming superintendent, uh, before July first. And then some miscellaneous costs for a, to round it up to thirteen five. So I, I think it's a responsible number, frankly, I don't think you're going to spend this much on these expenses. But I think instead of having to come back to you for repeated dips into the bucket, I, I wanted to give you a responsible number to work with, so. That is my recommendation, a budget of thirteen five.
And I would also just tag in here that, um, this is a superintendent search for the new district, the new merged district.
Right.
In my mind, this seems like an appropriate use of the merger grant money to find a superintendent for the new merged district. So my intention would be to use that grant for these costs and potentially to seek new strategies.
Yes, perfect.
So you don't need to make a motion on that, I just wanted to make sure that I was seeing head shake, so it's okay when I use that bucket, that you're fine with it.
That's very sensible.
Good idea.
And I think this budget makes a lot of sense as well, that is probably something you might wanna make a motion on.
Yeah, I think so, but.
So I think we approve thirteen five. Expenses for the search process.
Up two, and I'll second that, yep.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
So let's play the contingency game here, okay? If I'm wrong, okay, if somehow expenses look like they're gonna exceed thirteen five, is it reasonable to ask the board to reassemble in order to further approve financial costs as, as explained? Okay, thank you.
And may I ask you, because I think the advertising number is high, and that's okay to put it, and this budget is high, but besides School Spring, I'm not sure, I agree with you. Um, advertising in papers is not gotten good results in searches I know of. Is there any place else you would recommend putting an ad?
At, at cost? I, I, I have a number of places at no cost.
Yeah, no, I'm saying at cost.
But at cost, I, I do not, I do not, it, it really.
I, I agree.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, especially today, I, I think most people go to free or low-cost websites, I, I think the days of looking for the, there are times ad on Sunday and finding a job or.
They're all fine.
I just wondered if he knew something.
Yesterday's news.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah.
And, and I'm approaching this budget, by the way, with the total budget in mind, I, I know you're not expecting me to hold to each individual line item, but the first one's fixed for certain, but, you know, mileage might be six fifty-one for all I know, I mean, it just, it may, may be that, so. Okay. Next, I think, in, in terms of process, will be the formal charge that you want to set for the screening committee. And within that charge, you wanna talk about the mission, your expectations of the mission, the nature, uh, nature of the membership, as well as the process that you want the committee to work through, so. Let's, uh, let's go there next.
Great.
Thank you, sir. I was just checking to see, Grant, if you were paying attention, you're doing fine, you're holding up over there, it's good.
Just trying to get my salary as an assistant.
Thanks for being here tonight.
So just to prove that I am flexible, that I am a learner, and that I can adapt, I'm gonna lose the hyphen in the, in the header there, I can do that for you, that's gone, just like that, outta here.
Yeah.
That mistake is gonna be something that is gonna always.
We'll deal with it.
So I, I'm not gonna assault you, but it might be helpful if I just maybe read with you on this. Montpelier Roxbury Board of School Directors charges a superintendent candidate's screening committee with the express authority to guide the initial superintendent screening process. Screening process will begin as defined by the board's search process calendar, it will conclude upon its recommending finalist candidates to the board, parenthetic, or concluding that none shall be as part of this screening process. Screening committee shall work with the VSA consultant to consult, uh, to complete the screening process. Screening committee shall strive to present up to three licensed or licenseable candidates to the board. Whoops, that, let's, let's lose, that meet the search criteria established by the board. Screening committee shall provide information on the finalist candidate's experience, specific skills, and related background details to the board following, that's redundant too, isn't it? No, sorry, to the board finds completion the initial screening process, but shall not vote on or otherwise rank the finalist, the board retains the final, retains authority to hire the new superintendent, so. It's meant to give clarity to the members of your screening committee in terms of what their job is, what their job isn't, and, and what the goal of their work is. Keep going.
Yep.
Yes.
It is customary not to have umpteen thousand people on a screening committee because it just doesn't work well with too many people. But it does work better if you can have a cross-section of the organization and, and school community reflected back on, on the committee. So certainly this is negotiable, but my suggestion to you is to find out perhaps a ten-member screening committee, would be a couple of board members. One of whom gets named by you as the chair, one of the two board members gets named by you, the board, as the chair of the screening committee. And the other board member gets named by you as a secretary to the screening committee, so there's a direct link back to the board for reporting, updates, whatever communication you're expecting to hear back from the committee, there's a direct pipeline of communication that way. Two central office administrators, because those are the cats that work most directly, most frequently, most in and out daily with your, your, your superintendent. One building administrator, two teachers, one support staff member, and two individuals to the, parent community, stakeholder group. So, um, how does ten feel, let's start there.
It feels viscerally good, although I, I, Mike McCrae's walked through this and I, we may wanna up it a few for, I think generally the purposes of inclusion, I think we have at least, for instance, I think we have at least two building administrators. Uh, in fact, I think we've got maybe five building administrators who want to be on the committee, but I think we can narrow it down to two, I think getting it down to one would be hard. In fact, getting it down to two might even be difficult, I, I know, I think we can do two, I, I think there are, I think it would be difficult with one.
Well, with the two central office administrators and a building administrator, that I.
Oh, okay.
Who is in central office, is that you?
No, I was lobbying those two. Yep, no, I think that's good, I think that's good, sorry.
Mary, okay, Mary, right.
The one that's still left is Mary.
Right, that's what I thought, we were, 'cause the other ones are vacant.
That's right, that's correct.
Yes.
Okay, then, erase that, um, I think we would.
It would be Grant, Mary, essentially.
Yeah.
I guess so.
Yeah, we'd Grant, Mary, and then one at a, a principal.
And then a principal.
Yeah, I, I think that's, that's plenty.
And, and to be honest, if there was a struggle that both principals felt so strongly, then Mary and I could maybe, there's four of us, and this is.
Yeah, okay.
Or actually five with, so there's five, and this is giving three seats, so I think as long as three is good, I think, you know, we can argue amongst ourselves.
You can take it out, yeah.
Okay, sorry, I, I was misreading, I, I think we're fine there. I do think we probably want three parents, community members, uh, both for inclusion and also, uh, I was thinking one from Roxbury and two from Montpelier.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
I think that's reasonable, 'cause I was having a hard time thinking about the small numbers and like where, how Roxbury's gonna fit in, or a small percentage, but you want this and that, and, yeah, it would make sense, I think, to have three parent community members to allow some presence for sure.
May I suggest this, I think three's a fine number, go with it, um, I don't know that I preclude here, um, what that distribution needs to be, I think that when you make the decisions down the road about who these individuals are gonna be, you're gonna figure out those weights and what makes the most sense.
Okay.
Yeah.
And Mike, one thing that's kind of a unique thing for this group is, um, still yet to be determined the collective bargaining units. But if, um, Montpelier obviously is the larger group, Montpelier has three bargaining units, a teacher, an IA specific, and an AFSCME which is ten prestonians. So I know a lot of times we have one for each one of the bargaining units, a representative for each one of those. This would have teachers and support staff, which typically support staff is your other contract, your bargaining unit, which includes everybody, but we have a, two support staff in essence, we have instructional assistants and we have AFSCME. So I don't know if it's worth saying one teacher rep, one IA rep, one AFSCME rep, or if, I, I'm okay with it like this, but I don't know if that creates any problems. I'm not on a lot of the committees, so I don't know how it'd be typically running.
One approach could be, um, that I suspect each of those three, um, labor groups, um, has some sort of leadership structure. It might, as the board reaches out to the various customer groups, the principals, teachers, maybe reach out to the three union leaders and just say, you know, can you cooperate on a recommended representative, representing labor?
I would say that, that those two other, I wouldn't want to do less than two teachers, so I would say, use that approach to the two other bargaining units and ask them to provide one person.
You think that would, would work?
Well, I'm really, I don't know, not actually two bargaining units, because of Roxbury.
Two support staff. Got it, got it.
Got it, got it.
Or others, right. Maybe it would be three, 'cause there's a one teachers.
Well, I was debating the issue of two teachers, uh, and it's just a hard, when you have so few people, it's hard to figure out what to do with Roxbury, to be honest.
Right. And I didn't necessarily mean that there would be a, a Roxbury representative, I just meant that there's still those bargaining units involved.
Right, right.
And Roxbury is one of those, it's Washington's, part of Washington's south, only had two bargaining units. So you could do two teacher reps and one support staff rep to be determined by the leadership of AFSCME slash Mesa.
Yeah, that's what I'd do.
The other, do we want a student on the committee?
I thought about that.
Um.
My, I would say yes.
I would say yes too, but it, it does add another person.
I mean, do you round it up to twelve?
Yeah, and I was thinking of setting a limit of twelve and.
Mm-hmm. I think we need a limit.
Uh, I think you wanna.
I think we need a limit, yeah, definitely.
Then we can.
Well, I think.
Maybe we can call these numbers guidelines, with twelve and absolute, and if, you know.
Right, room for.
You know, if both Mary and Grant decide they don't, both don't need to do it, we can, if they're just wanting, add another teacher, or if, you know.
There might be some people that wear two hats too.
Yeah.
I, I also think it'll be very important to have established the calendar and publish it. So if you're gonna be on this committee, you have to be able to show up, and that won't be easy on this timeline, so.
That's a good point.
Uh, I think, you know.
Could be some self-elimination of interest just based on that.
Right, I think that would.
So are we at twelve, is that where we find ourselves?
Yeah.
Twelve-member committee?
Happy at twelve, mm-hmm.
Thank you for not going beyond twelve, I really appreciate that because it, it just gives.
Well, even twelve's gonna be unwieldy, so, yeah.
Yep. Okay, and before we move off that section, as a board, you'll figure out which two members make the most sense to cross over onto the screening committee and, and those two folks will be assigned these two roles.
I think we've been involved for Roxbury and we'll find out.
I'm game. I said I'm game.
Great, thank you for that. Process, uh, screening committee is authorized to work within the committee. What? Screening committee is authorized to work within the committee? What?
Yeah, what's up with that? To work within the board or to work within the?
I'll check that in a second. With advice and direction of the VSA consultant to receive, prepare, distribute, and review materials using electronic resources, and to conduct first round semifinalist candidate interviews. Screening committee members shall agree to keep all applicant information confidential. The board will be responsible for publicly identifying finalists it will interview, so that becomes your ball to call when you wanna call that ball, and I'll talk to you down the road about that, but, um, the big idea here is that this stays where it needs to. And, and the reason that's important is that this can be premature disclosure of folks before they reach the finalist stage can be really career debilitating events for folks, so it's just a respectful, professional gesture. Screening committee chair is liaison between screening committee and the board. Screening committee members shall be, uh, meeting should be warned and open to the public, however, the screening committee shall review candidate materials and deliberate an executive session complying with open meeting law requirements. Screening committee secretary shall keep meeting minutes, and send a copy to the board clerk within five days on each screening committee meeting. I will clean up the language on that, but do you think the breadth of this is sufficient to inform the committee and is translatable to them about your interests and how it is that they'll be doing business? Obviously, I'll be there for one of those sessions, I'll be working hand in hand with the committee chair, uh, in terms of facilitating the meetings and keeping things on track, but in terms of the charge, the charge is an important charge because, as we said earlier, this is where a lot of the heavy lifting gets done early on your behalf. And since it's being done on your behalf, you get to decide how it's being done. Becky, how do you feel about it? You've got some HR background here, does this sort of feel pretty close?
No, I think this is good, this is a good structure.
Yeah, I think so too.
Can I just ask how, with them being warned and open meetings, but yet being, um, everything being confidential, I'm just.
How's that, yeah, I was wondering, so it's probably the, I guess it's probably like the process, we're meeting on this day, we're going, just in.
There'll be different functions for the different meetings, uh, for example, the first meeting is, is gonna have nothing whatsoever to do with the applicants. First one's gonna be getting organized, getting the ground rules down, making sure folks understand. First one's gonna be getting organized, getting the ground rules down, making sure folks understand how to use school spring, going through confidentiality requirements, understanding state law. Second meeting will be an open meeting in which questions, interview questions, get defined and so forth. I imagine the third meeting will start an open session and pretty quickly move into executive session, as that will be when we get after the screening of, of the paper people, start to make some evaluations, assessments, decisions about who to interview. Those interviews for the next session would be an executive session. Reference checks is an executive session activity, so those are examples of how we would differentiate the activities of the meetings about what falls under the open meeting law requirements for executive session or open session. How are we doing? Good so far?
Good so far.
Do me a favor, set that aside for now, we're gonna come back and visit this again in a second, but before you adopt that, let's talk about exactly what Tina was talking about, and that is the calendar, because it's, it's all tied into this, and. And now you can pass this one over. This is where the rubber hits the road. This is where it gets real, this is where there is not a whole lot of flex. My experience is that screening committees feel abused if you work them on Saturdays and Sundays, so we're gonna try to avoid Saturdays and Sunday meetings for the screening committee, and try to, try to confine it to the work week. But some noteworthy dates are some board meetings that we wanna avoid those nights, because you've got some membership on your boards that are serving on the screening day. So that would be, as I understand it, May 2nd, May 16th, and June 6th. Those sound familiar, as upcoming meeting dates?
Yep.
Okay. You got Memorial Day as a holiday on the 28th of May, and you've got your graduation on Friday, June 16th, or 15th, rather. My interest for you, on your behalf, is to get this done before graduation. That's really where my head is on this. So again, it's a matter of reverse engineering, working backwards from that sort of end date, and then rolling things forward. So here's the timeline, as I would see it. Tomorrow, based on what you've done tonight, and thank you for what you've done tonight, we begin advertising tomorrow. We get the recruitment activity started, and we work between Heather and the VSPA office to just hit, hit the ground running with, with materials tomorrow. I would hope that by May 4th, not later than May 4th, you would be able to convene. Be a special meeting, I imagine, unless you could do it on May 2nd, I mean, that's your call, whether you can work it into your agenda that night or not, and name names to the screening committee. So that means you've gotta have some way of doing that, and we wanna talk about what that looks like. You wanna have some process by which you're putting the word out, that by the way, we've got this thing called a screening committee, by the way, it's gonna meet on these dates, by the way, we'd love to have you consider sitting on it, and by the way, here's how you let us know you're interested in doing just that. So that would be May 4th, operational deadline for you naming the committee. The committee would be named by then, and the first meeting would be on Monday, May 7th. I would imagine, well, I would, I would prefer, and I think a lot of folks might prefer this be a late afternoon meeting, like maybe, I don't know, what time's school get out? Three o'clock? Three thirty? What time's your?
Three.
Three, right, that's, that's three?
School's here, I think it's three.
So travel from Roxbury, we got parents, we got working folks, we got a whole bunch of folks, maybe start like at four o'clock? Four o'clock meeting, start.
Roxbury ends at?
Two thirty.
Two thirty?
Yeah, so.
So maybe even three thirty could work then. So late afternoon's what I'm thinking for most screening committee meetings, and that ought to be clear, too, Tina, in terms of what folks check their calendars, availability, not just for dates, but for times as well. Thursday, May 10th, the screening committee meets a second time that week, and that's the meeting at which they develop interview questions and talk about interview protocols, and just get their ducks in a row. Because at the end of that next weekend, May 13th, which is three weekends from now, is when the applications would close, so. I'd love to give you four weeks, but frankly, I can't, we're gonna work with three, and that's what we've got to work with, and folks know it. What's most important, I'll bet Becky can back this up, is for working folks out there, they like to file applications on the weekends for the most part, that's what they can get after.
That's a lot of work.
Yep, it's a lot of work to do it, and that's like an organizer thinking, organizer time, and I like the fact that we can get three weekends in before May 13th.
Yep.
On the 14th, the day after, is when the screening committee meets the third time, and they're gonna be screening the completed applications, starting to make some assessments, determine what semifinalists they want us to meet as not just paper people, but flesh and blood, real people. We then get those folks in here the following week for interviews before the screening committee. Screening committee's gonna take roughly a week until about May 29th to do its due diligence on reference checks with those folks, and make the final decision on the 29th, who they're gonna be forwarding to you. And then you come out of temporary hibernation on this project, and you plug right back in again, and it's gonna be your time then to deal with the finalists that are remanded to you by the screening committee. What that means is, you'd wanna have a meeting probably the week of the 28th, the holiday week, in which you're doing your final planning around your big night with the finalists. Will, you and I would, would sit down, we'll figure out a schedule, we'll figure out a protocol, we'll figure out how you want the committee forums run, you're gonna figure out who's gonna play host and hostess to the various finalists, as we're showing them the district, how we're getting dinner reservations made, and all those levels of details will be taken care of that night, so that the following week, we get after your interviews of the finalists. Not a whole lot of time for wiggle room here, but we can do it.
If you can get it advertised tomorrow, I think that's a key part of it.
I agree, yep.
Takes no time to put it up on school spring.
Exactly.
So we have our application deadline on May 13th. Is there anything happening in essentially New England? School-wise, are there any VSPA meetings? Are there any superintendent meetings? Is there anything brewing in the education calendar?
On that weekend?
No, just between now and the 13th, that we should target to get our vacancy announcement, too?
Yes, and, and the VSA office has that calendar, the VSBA office has that calendar, and, yeah.
So they're, so they're not on here right now, but those special events, we will have our announcement at?
For example, I have an academy date with a handful of aspiring superintendents, meeting the first week of May.
Good.
So just along.
So that's, that's an example, one of many examples in which we will absolutely have this out there in front of people, yep. Frankly, they'll have before then, but. So.
It's good.
It's, it's tight, it's tidy, it's real, it's, we're, we're moving, we're not gonna be, not gonna be spending a lot of time in between. We're gonna be moving along pretty quickly here. Yep. What would be wicked helpful is if we could at least pinpoint what date during the week of June 4th or June 11th you want to do this.
A special board meeting.
Well, a special board, there, there are two special board meetings. One is the organizational meeting for the big night, and the other's the big night. Less important to me at this minute is the special board meeting the week of the 28th, but if you're ready to decide both dates, that's great. What's far more important to me is that I'd be ready to communicate with applicants, clear your calendar on this date in case you're a finalist, because that's the night you're gonna have your chance. And the sooner I can put that information into folks' hands, the happier everybody is, and the more, the more smoothly it works.
So we have school board meetings scheduled for June 6th.
Correct. And I assume you've got a regular agenda that night and don't need to double up, and.
No.
I wouldn't recommend double, I'd recommend dedicating your attention just to this for whatever date you set. So Tina, the sixth is out, is what I'm hearing you say? Yeah, yeah.
Well, I think I'm out to the.
First half of June?
No.
Well, in the week of the 11th, you wanna be making up your mind, then. If we have it like as late as the June 13th, that's really, to turn that right. Maybe we will have the perfect candidate by then, I don't know. Maybe we will.
So, so on that day, when all three candidates come.
Yep.
It's a big day.
Yep.
And in the evening, we'll do more of a formal interview.
Yep, one at a time. They'll be scheduled for sixty to seventy-five minutes each, you'll have some time in between each one to sort of process what you just learned and heard and thought and so forth. And you'll see number two, and you'll see number three, and then you'll be spending some time deliberating about all of that.
So the idea is, at the end of that night, we've picked our, or ranked our candidates.
Unless you have good reasons not to, yes. Unless you need more information, unless you wanna vet something, unless you just need more time to sleep on something, then yes, that would be decision point time.
Well, Jim, if you were gonna be here the sixth, suppose we did two deadly nights in a row and did the seventh, Thursday the seventh.
I think the sixth, I'm, I'm actually going the sixth through the ninth.
Oh, good, 'cause I'm going the seventh, I can't do a seventh meeting.
So fourth, fifth, or any, any day of the 11th works.
I prefer the fourth.
Might as soon get it done on the fourth, honestly. Just keep, just marching it forward.
If we have people traveling, it's.
Well, and they're traveling, too, that's a good point. They're missing one long day from work, rather than in the middle of the week.
Yeah.
It's the, and you're going the sixth through the eighth?
Yeah.
Okay, well, maybe the fourth.
I can be available if, I'm, might be able to switch my flight from the sixth to the seventh, no, I don't think so. We, now that's our annual meeting.
Sounds like the fourth.
I'm hearing the fourth, that works for me. What's also, even though it's early in that window, it's fine. It's actually good, for a couple of reasons. One, should you be able to make a decision early on like that, it just gives your, your, your choice that much more time to figure out transition and separating from contract and getting into your contract and all those good things. But secondly, the fact that you've declared that date of the fourth, you can do some advanced promotion of it, even if you don't yet know who those finalists are. You can certainly get the word out that there will be forums at such, such location, at such, such time to meet the candidates and so forth, so that's really good news. So the fourth, bingo.
Let's do it.
Very nice, very nice.
I would assume you're gonna want the board to meet to go to the logistics early in the week of the 28th, then, as opposed to late in the week of the 28th, 'cause that's not giving you much time between planning the logistics and it being on us.
Let's plan to meet the 28th, how about that?
Well, that's Monday.
That's Memorial Day. How about the 30th, which is a Wednesday?
Yeah, 'cause the 29th is when the screening committee likely will make their last.
Right.
So do the 30th.
And, and you don't have to wait for the screening committee, I mean, frankly, you can meet earlier than the week of the 28th. You wanna meet the week of the eight, I'm sorry, the week of the 21st is even, is even possible.
The logistics wouldn't necessarily change based on the candidates.
Well, we're sort of in the Wednesday, we're sort of in the Wednesday run, that's why I was, I mean, we have a board meetings on Wednesday.
I see.
That's why I was thinking maybe the 30th.
Well, I'm, I'm gone again.
What about the 23rd?
But I'm, I'm there the whole week of the 21st, the.
I'm afraid I'm jammed up 23rd, 24th, I do apologize, those are nights that I couldn't help you.
22nd?
I could help you that night, yep.
You'll do that, if it works for you.
I was gonna.
I'm gonna go home and put this on.
I was gonna try to negotiate him to change that meeting on the 21st to the 22nd, if I'm gonna do this. Of the, of the.
The screening committee.
Screening committee meeting, 'cause I'm in a wedding on that weekend. Is there, this is, borders on irrational, but I'll go there anyway. On that meeting you have scheduled Monday for the 21st, is there any chance of doing it Tuesday, the 22nd?
Or Wednesday, the 23rd?
No, yes.
Okay.
Yes, for.
Yes, I could do the 22nd with you.
With that one that you've already got scheduled, the one that you've got scheduled on the 21st, can you do it the 22nd, is what I'm saying.
Yes.
And potentially, we could double up on meetings that day.
Yes, and just do the logistic planning and.
Do, I mean, the screening committee will meet at four, and then the board meet at seven, or something like that.
So, let's, let's just, that's, that's a really important question. Whatever date we pick, whether we stick with the 21st or move to the 22nd, it will depend on how many folks the screening committee chooses to interview about how long that meeting is and what time it needs to start. So if you still wanna hold a board meeting, or what's going on that night, it's a.
Well, we were thinking of scheduling our logistics meeting.
Logistics meeting, yeah, thank you. Let's just pretend that they had five folks to interview, that's gonna easily be a five-hour committee meeting.
Yeah.
So, it, it, just mean they start early in the day, that's all we need for that group.
Yeah, day long.
So as, you know, I'm gonna wanna modify this a little bit for your clarity as you figure out how you want to get the word out about the screening committee opportunities, about not just the days, but the windows of time in which they might likely meet. I think that might be further useful to your folk consideration. So let's revisit what we just talked about. Definitely June 4th is when you're seeing your finalists.
Yep.
Yep.
You're taking the week of the 28th off as a board.
Yeah.
And that activity about the logistics for hosting finalists and so forth is going to occur on the evening of the 22nd, am I correct about that?
Yep.
That's the target.
Seven PM? Okay.
So that, so that would mean if the other, the screening committee is meeting, it's just starting earlier in the day?
Yep.
Is that what's, we're thinking of? Okay.
And it won't start any earlier than it has to, but it's gonna have to start as early as it needs to.
Yeah, yeah, makes sense. Thank you for doing that.
It's, it's, I'm happy to do it, I'm happy I can do it.
So May 14th is a meeting, and instead of May 21st, we're definitely saying it's May 22nd?
That is correct. Instead of week of June 4th or June 11th, it is June 4th.
And the seven o'clock meeting is an organizational meeting of the board? What is that meeting again? Remind me, that's the.
The meeting in advance of when you see the finalists?
Yeah.
Yep, you're, you're gonna get to that night, you are going to check in on your school spring savvy skills. You're gonna figure out what the detailed schedule looks like for yourselves and for the candidates that day. You're gonna figure out who's gonna play host and hostess as candidates are showing the district.
For June 4th.
For, for.
For June 4th.
For June 4th, yes, yeah. It's, it's the organization for June 4th, is what I think it is. Yep, yep, we're on the same page. How are we doing, sports fans?
Doing good.
We're doing good.
This is doable.
She's been very helpful.
I'm glad.
It's very helpful.
Lisa, you're signing heavily over there.
I'm just looking at.
Your calendar?
The list, and the, define the breadth of the advertisement, we basically decided school spring and some of the other three that's checked off.
Yes.
Well, I'm seeking strategies, I have some suggestions.
Oh, sure.
Yeah. But I think it would be not high cost.
And I think most people in this public school community are familiar with school springing, just as, as an indicator. I lived in Massachusetts when I applied for the job that Dr. Dewey's hired me for twelve years ago, so I, that, I was definitely out of state in the way I went through that, so I think school spring does reach out.
Okay.
It was a wonderful thing James Fitzpatrick did.
Isn't it, though? Yeah, he, he did right by us all, and by himself.
I'm sorry, I'm not there when, there might be a, a community meeting, so to see the candidates, or is, do you have any candidates?
It, it'll be the same day as the interviews, that would be June 4th?
Yeah.
How it tends to look that day, if, if you choose to sort of do it the traditional way, is that we try to have the finalists sort of passing the night a bit, so that they're not in the same place at the same time, so. When somebody's visiting one school, somebody's visiting a different school, going to different restaurants at different times, they're staggered, obviously, for the interviews that night. It's, 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 separate opportunities.
It's a logistical nightmare, but it's sort of planned.
Yeah, and you're right, you know. Community comes out and, and, and knows where to, to meet the candidate, it tends to be rather informal, it tends to be a chance to greet, meet, and hear a few words, and ask a few questions, and that sort of thing, to sort of get impressions of, of the folks, be an opportunity for, for folks who attend the forums to just leave you some, some feedback for you to consider that evening when you do meet the, the finalists yourselves, so they'll, that, that's all.
And oftentimes.
What about the time?
Yeah, that's, that's what we gotta work on, yeah, yeah.
I was gonna say, often during the day, there's a time that each candidate during the day, their, uh, community members could come in and meet with candidates, too, but we just haven't decided the time yet, but it could happen during the day as well as the meeting at night.
And, you know, if it's three, that's one set of scheduling dynamics, if it's two, it's a different set of scheduling dynamics. So it's, it's dependent on what sort of emerges through the process that we will work with. And, you know, if it's three, that's one set of scheduling dynamics, if it's two, it's a different set of scheduling dynamics, so it's, it's dependent on what sort of emerges through the process that we will work with.
Did you need to go back to the charge?
The charge, yeah, yeah, I do, thanks. So the reason I just paused in the charge was for that conversation that we just had around the details of the screening committee's dates and times and efforts and so forth. So, I wouldn't mind drafting some content for you to share. You'll know your pipelines, you'll know how to reach your administrative group, you'll know how to reach your teacher group, you'll know how to reach your unions, you'll know how to reach your, your families and parents and community and so forth. But what I can do is I can give you the gist of what the screening committee work is all about, when it is the screening committee will be working, what it is they'll be doing, roughly what time of day it is they'll be meeting. So that you can then fold that into your outreach to those groups, is that, is that reasonable?
You know, we talked about the time for all of these and you said three thirty and I'm thinking four o'clock allows somebody who might work to take just a little bit of time on and come to a meeting.
The end of the day.
Yeah.
So four o'clock, I think is, is better.
I'm on board, yep, yep.
I was saying to Mike that we, I thought we had a good process for the merger committee, for people that wanted to be on the merger committee, you remember they wrote a letter and came to the board, so I think if we open it up and there's some process like that.
To write a letter or something.
Yeah.
For the communities, when they're community folks.
For the community, for the, more of the staff side of things, there's less of that kind of procedure needed, or?
Yeah.
Right, I was assuming.
Yeah, I think we also, I think we're gonna have to coordinate with the, or the senior reps and.
And the administrative team.
And the administrative team.
The teachers.
And, you know, and hopefully C Q will help us with this, I think we want to make sure that it's not just the usual folks that they, you know, that we get, get a representative group on.
And we are in a tight timeline, so we need to make sure that we're getting somebody who can commit, more than just the dates, but who's willing to spend the time and outside time to get involved and to go with us through this fast, fast process.
So with vacation ending tomorrow, it's probably logical that you'd be able to sort of ramp up and get this sort of news and invitations out maybe early next week?
Yep.
And then you're deciding on this when again, is it the second?
Uh, either the second or we'll do the special meeting, but I'm hoping we can squeeze it in on the second, I hope we do a lot of.
Let's just put it on the agenda and do it.
Yeah, I think we can.
Yeah.
Make ourselves do it.
Yeah, I, I think, I think people would rather stay extra time on the second than.
I agree.
Then call us different.
Different meeting, alright.
So if you can pump this out to your different constituents, Monday-ish, the twenty third, that'll give folks a week plus a few days to get back to you with their letters of intent or interests or however you want to cast that.
I'll just throw out a little, little problem, and that is the meeting on the second is due to be in Roxbury. And I don't know whether you're gonna ask community to respond and the board's gonna talk to them or not, but we need to think about that.
Okay, we do, I can look at that.
I mean, maybe we switch, maybe we go to Roxbury on the sixteenth or something.
How do the Roxburg feel about that?
I don't think it's gonna make a difference in terms of audience one way or the other, and so I think, right, nobody, nobody in Roxbury would feel slighted if we switched the date. Because we would anticipate that we'd have more monteblier folks present on the second, so it probably makes sense.
Are you expecting to interview folks, or are you expected to make decisions based on their paper invite, uh, response?
I don't know, that's what I was asking.
Right, do they need to show up to the meeting?
Do they?
Yeah, I mean, I guess my sense is we probably wanna have most, well, I was gonna say we might wanna have a lot of the pre-work kind of done, but, but the opportunity for people come, to come if we do. You know, if we are in a situation where, you know, we've got a bunch of letters and we, we might wanna just have, you know, fifteen, twenty minutes where people come up and introduce themselves and kind of expand on why they want to be on the committee.
Right, which is what we did for the merger committee, not that only, I'd say, very limited, you have two minutes or something, but, you know, it gives you the opportunity to say something.
And then we would decide in open meeting?
Not in executive session, I think, yeah.
An executive session?
Yeah.
We did it fairly efficiently last time, that's the only reason I'm thinking we can do it this time, don't you think?
Yeah, I, especially if we give it some thought beforehand and, you know.
Right, so you'd need to think, if that's, right, what's the deadline for getting your paperwork in, if you.
So what is the deadline?
Who do they send it to, or where, where does it go?
Who do they send it to, where does it go?
Yeah.
Um.
What's expected within that letter, is it a paragraph, is it just the name, I mean, what do you want from them?
Probably, I guess it's twenty seventh. I mean, I think we can even start getting stuff out now, uh.
Um.
Yeah, just on Facebook, you know, some of the, wait.
So you'll, you'll send us a draft of sort of.
But Mike is right.
I'll use some content to draw from, and you can, you can punch it up beyond that as you need to or want to.
Yeah.
If I got that to you by Saturday morning, is that reasonable?
Yeah.
Okay.
We begin.
Saturday morning is eleven fifty nine A M, is that right, is that, okay.
You bet.
Saturday, Saturday-ish, uh, yeah, and then we can get it out, you know, and maybe ask people to get us something by the twenty seventh, I know that's quick, but I, that'll give us a little time to review it, have a, you know, before the meeting on the second.
Or how about?
So remind me.
The twenty ninth?
The, well, I was gonna say or the thirtieth, so that you have it on, on, you've given them the weekend, another weekend.
Okay, I guess, yeah. Well, let's, let's say the twenty ninth, so that way.
Okay.
By midnight, whatever.
By midnight, yeah.
If you want us to specify.
Yeah, that way that gives us Monday to review it, so we're not, because we say the thirtieth will get some folks in, you know, at eleven fifty nine, on the thirty.
You're right, I'm looking, right.
Right.
You're right, I lost track of what week I was in, thanks. Right.
So remind me, we committed to a twelve person screening committee, but we didn't commit to the distribution, so we'll decide that on the second also, right?
Yeah.
Max.
I thought we decided.
Well, I think we.
I think we roughly decided, but we're not.
Most.
We haven't, we didn't commit to how many community, et cetera, um.
I think Jim's request was three community.
Three, and then a student.
Yeah, I think we do want three community.
It was, the question was about the teachers and the support.
Right, and do we want any students, um, it seemed like twelve is gonna cover.
Yeah. Yeah.
I think one student would be lovely.
Yes.
So are we saying the twenty ninth is the deadline for community members to respond as well as the student, the teacher representative, and the support staff representative, that's the deadline for?
Well, I'm assuming that the, maybe this is incorrect, some stuff, but I'm assuming that the board's not gonna decide on, from a whole list of teachers, that that could be an administrative team decision for the teachers and the. And we're asking the two support staffs to, to give us somebody?
I was thinking it would be the same approach, that perhaps it's an email from Jim that Heather can forward to the M E A saying, would you forward two names to serve on this committee?
Oh, perfect, yeah, I just meant, we aren't spending time at the board meeting with that.
Yeah.
Asking them to submit one amongst the two of them.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
And are they, same thing with student council, is it?
Um, I, I didn't think about this.
I would ask Mike.
I, I think we might have a custom wire of the student council, for instance, we might want someone from the Rachel Justice Alliance to be on, I don't know if there's overlap with the student council, so some sort of, I, I would, probably working with Mike.
I was gonna say, I'd ask Mike to just.
Yeah.
So Mike can designate that question.
Those are different Mike than me, right?
Yes.
Yeah, different Mike.
Mike McGrath.
We have a lot of Mike in this.
We have a lot of Mike, cool, it's a great name.
Yeah, so if, if Jim, you could like draft some kind of an email that Heather can send out, that would address the teacher rep, the support staff rep, um, we can talk to Mike McGrath about the student rep. The central office and building administrators can discuss amongst themselves.
Yeah, you guys can work that out, yeah.
And then you'll just decide the board members, so really, the only thing you're gonna have to sort through is can you just submit from the community?
And just to leverage the opportunity, in case there is an article or story coming out at tonight's meeting, is there a place that the article can direct people to, to learn about this? Where would a central repository of this information be?
I hesitantly say that of course could be on the website, but we have a six, a, a history of problems with that, so what do we wanna say?
Is it, did I hear Facebook, did I hear front porch forum, did I hear other venues that?
Actually, honestly, I should say that, we should be able to get this up on the website.
We should be able to get something on the website, this is a pretty important thing for the district, yeah.
In a pinch, I have taken some notes on how to post stuff onto the website, so if you're talking about perhaps what, um, some version of what Mike sent you on Saturday morning and tweaking it to, to put it onto a document that explains what we're looking for.
Yeah.
If you, once that's a final product, if you send it to me, I can get posted on the school, on the MPS B T website under Board of School Directors, even though it's not real intuitive for Montebier Roxbury to look there, I doubt, it's probably the best we can do.
Okay.
But if you're directed there.
Would Monday be a reasonable time for folks to look for that? Is that what you're saying, is by, by Monday?
Um, I think so.
Yeah.
Monday?
Yeah.
As soon as Jim gives it to me, I can get it posted.
Yeah.
We'll be in on this.
We could also, and we could also at the same time send a notice to the Times article.
How are we doing? Great.
Do you need action on the charter at this point, or charge at this time, or?
With, um.
Do we need to, should we approve it, just, do we need to approve it, should we approve?
I think we should, yeah, I think you should have a scheduled charge, it's important enough to do that.
Let's do, let's do.
Yeah.
So, with appropriate edits, is this the charge that we're formalizing?
Uh, yeah, we need a, a motion.
I move we adopt the charge as, as presented.
And edited.
As edited, yeah.
And edited.
With twelve being the magic number?
Yeah.
Yep, okay.
Second, by Lisa, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And did that include the schedule, or do we have to separately approve the schedule?
It includes the schedule.
It includes the schedule.
Just wanted to clarify.
And I will amend that schedule as well, just for your consumption.
Thank you. It's a lot of work, Mike, we appreciate it.
I, I, I'm, I'm super helpful, please.
Yes.
I'm thrilled we're at the point we are right now, because it, it matters, and I think you've really done good work tonight and I appreciate it very much. Nothing else that I think I need from you at this point, I'll, I, I will not be a part of your process of selecting membership to the committee, but obviously I'll need to know who you've assigned to the committee. And we'll figure out a way to communicate that, just so I know I'm working with when we do sit down with the screening committee for the first time.
So for the, I'd like to clarify, for the board members particularly that are not here.
Yes.
Um, you said that the representatives from the board will be on the screening committee, will the board see you again?
Yes, I'll be back with you for those last two meetings.
Okay.
I'll help you get organized in terms of ramping up for that night and I'll, I'll be with you that night. Yep. I'll be a bit invisible unless you're on the screening committee, but trust that I'll be working on your behalf to get her done. And the board's comfortable naming two of your own to this committee as well?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll draw straws for the monteblier piece.
Okay. The long straws, we're just the long straws, not the short ones, the long ones.
Yeah, I wanna, I, I know the only one who has firmly expressed she does not want to be on it is Bridgette, there's plenty of other things to do.
Oh, says she did not want to.
I scared her off.
Uh, no, Brid, Brid, Bridgette's been wading through plenty, so she decided that she could bow on this one.
Okay. Well, folks, this is exciting, we're, we're shooting for the best here, I know you understand that it's, there's no guarantees in what we're about to do, but we're gonna give it the college try and get you that next superintendent, that's the grand plan here.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm excited about this process and I appreciate this great work, I, speak for others, and I say we, I don't think we'd be able to do this without this help, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome. See you, see you. Billiards, let's run the table, shall we, who, who's a fan of number one, how many number ones do we have out there? Okay, who likes number two? Okay, who likes three? All right, who likes four? Who hates five?
Yeah, no kidding.
A little, yeah, yeah, how about six?
I like six.
We got one for six, good, who likes seven? How about eight?
I'm down for eight.
One down for eight, nine?
I'm there again.
Nine it is, ten?
It's a good out of state question, but I don't like it, I'm afraid.
Eleven? Twelve?
I like twelve.
I said twelve.
I like twelve, too.
Yeah.
One, two, three, three it is. Th- thirteen?
I said thirteen, but changing the small, crossing off the small, but.
Just unique.
We, we can edit it, but you still like it, is it, so, so we got three for that?
Yep.
Okay. Fourteen? Fifteen? You don't get to vote. Sixteen.
I'm very bad.
I like sixteen.
I like sixteen.
Me too.
Three and sixteen, seventeen? Eighteen?
Eighteen.
Ooh, almost a home run there, four.
I was gonna say seventeen, but the way you treat them, you are.
Oh, of course the budget.
Well, for if it's at eighteen, we just use eighteen for sure as one of them.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I, I want to say that I'm thinking about this as a, a general, as I think about general assessments, and since it's a general question, you want it to be open enough that you can see how somebody's gonna answer it, in other words, open enough so that you find out what they're really thinking.
So enough open-ended opportunities to, to learn, okay, so we're lobbying for one over another, as you said that, were you pushing for?
No, I'm just saying that as, as I looked at the questions, that's what I wanted, I didn't want any very specific, I might ask those if I was on the steering committee, but on a, for an essay, I wanna leave it open so that you can either wow me or hang yourself.
Tell you what, we're gonna focus right now on twelve, thirteen, and sixteen, okay, twelve, thirteen, sixteen, pick the two you like the most, twelve, thirteen, sixteen.
And for thirteen, we're open to maybe striking everything after challenging, I mean, because it's not really s.
I would say unique should stay, but small and rural, maybe change, maybe leave out?
And do we, does, does that convey we're challenging, I'm, I think what it may attract to the job is comparatively, we're not challenging.
Isn't it unique?
Yeah, and I don't, I don't like thirteen, so I can't speak to it.
I read that as, how do you, how do you create a, how do you create a, um, community of learners that is both educationally inclusive and challenging?
Needing a challenge?
Educationally, educationally challenging.
Educationally, okay, right.
That's the way I feel.
So the smaller you need more of school, I agree, small and rural don't need to be around, I don't know if you wanna say unique, it, because then it just makes it sound like it's the district that's challenging.
Right, that's true, sure, exactly.
So no commas in there, Grant, just, there's both educationally inclusive and challenging, period, is it?
That's.
That's the end, yes.
Yeah, okay, let's make that how thirteen reads then. So you're voting for two of these, twelve, thirteen, and sixteen. Good to go?
Mm-hmm.
How many like twelve? One, two, three, four. Who likes thirteen?
We're voting twice, or?
You, you, you're telling me your two votes, yeah?
Yeah, two.
Three, four, thirteen, and sixteen? One, two, three. So have we settled then on question twelve?
Yeah.
And then question eighteen?
By the numbers.
Twelve is nicely opened, I think.
It's so open.
Yeah.
Any edits to those two questions?
Um, wait a minute, let me think about that.
Okay. Yep.
I was, I was hoping to get a question in that had the word leadership in it, and so I was trying to think, could we say?
Well, I'm wondering if, here's, here's my thought on that.
But that's a good question, I'm okay with it, now that I've thought about it, but that's what I'm looking for, and maybe I wait and see if that's what I get.
That's what we're looking for in the answer.
That's kind of my thought, too, I think both these questions invite someone to talk about their leadership.
Okay, yeah, okay. Okay, yeah, I agree.
And if they don't, that should tell us something.
Yep, yep, got it.
Okay, so I'm going to embed these two questions into. So I'm going to embed these two questions into the process, so.
Great.
Feel the need to approve those? It's up to you whether you wanna formally-
Let's do it, just, no reason not to. Um, would you approve those two questions?
I'm going, we approve question thirteen and sixteen and the, no, thirteen, thirteen, sorry, twelve and eighteen, I'm sorry. I can't even read twelve and eighteen in our advertisement for superintendent.
One second. Um, discussion. All's in favor?
Aye.
I'm opposed. Right, twelve and thirteen is, or twelve and eighteen, is it?
I do, I do.
Okay.
Three, one, five, twelve, right?
So let's have a conversation now about, uh, your budget for this body of work.
Just for the grants, it's.
And budgets for this stuff are just, you know, challenging because every search is different. Some searches you've got all-in-say candidates, some searches you don't, and then that, that affects cost.
It's gone.
Some boards like to just, you know, shoot for the moon with all kinds of advertising, some like to sort of make it a, a bit more narrow and a bit more cost efficient, so. What I've captured here are just costs that I think frankly is a responsible budget with the exception of, I just don't know. Is it Q and R, Q, QCQ?
CQ.
CQs, strategies.
Um, so that would be a cost that would either be separate from this budget or you'd wanna fold into this budget, I, I think is the two ways to approach it.
I think it ought to be separate.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. The VSA contract is a fixed cost, mileage is an estimate, um, office expenses would be reimbursement to your central office if there was a need to reimburse for those kinds of expenses. Advertising, um, this, this is a big number and if you don't care to go hog wild with major city newspapers, it won't cost as much. This is a rough back of the envelope estimate of a whole lot of, in my mind, excess advertising. You're gonna want some food probably for the community forum when your citizens come out, you're gonna wanna pay for your finalists dinners, uh, and so forth when they're here that, that final day. Perhaps travel support for finalists, that's, you know, maybe.
Anticipating.
Transition costs, if there's time ideally for there to be transition between your outgoing superintendent and incoming superintendent, uh, before July first. And then some miscellaneous costs for a, to round it out to thirteen, five. So I, I think it's a responsible number. Frankly, I don't think you're going to spend this much on these expenses. But I think instead of having to come back to you for repeated dips into the bucket, I, I wanted to give you a responsible number to work with, so. That is my recommendation, a budget of thirteen, five.
And I would also just tag in here that, um, this is a superintendent search for the new district, the new merged district.
Right.
In my mind, this seems like an appropriate use of the merger grant money to find a superintendent for the new merged district.
Yep.
So my intention would be to use that grant for these costs and potentially the CQ strategies.
Yes.
So you don't need to make a motion on that, I just wanted to make sure that I was seeing head shake, so it's okay when I use that bucket that you're fine with it.
That's very sensible.
Good idea.
And I think this budget makes a lot of sense as well. That is probably something you might wanna make a motion on.
Yeah, I think so, but.
So I move we approve thirteen, five. Expenses for the search process.
Up two. Up two, and I'll second that, yeah?
Up two. Discussion. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
So let's play the contingency game here, okay? If I'm wrong, okay, if somehow expenses look like they're gonna exceed thirteen, five, is it reasonable to ask the board to reassemble in order to further approve financial costs as, as explained?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
And may I ask you, because I think the advertising number is high, and that's okay to put it in this budget is high, but besides school spring, I'm not sure, I agree with you, um, advertising in papers is not gotten good results in searches I know of. Is there any place else you would recommend putting an ad?
At, at cost? I, I, I have a number of places at no cost.
Yeah, no, I'm saying at a cost.
But at cost, I, I do not, I do not, it, it will-
I, I agree.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I think especially today, I, I think most people go to free or low cost. Once, I, I, I think the days of, if there are Times ad on Sunday and finding a job or-
I just wondered if he knew something.
Yesterday's news.
Right.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
And, and I'm approaching this budget, by the way, with the total budget in mind. I, I know you're not expecting me to hold to each individual line item, but the first one's fixed for certain, but you know, mileage might be six fifty-one for all I know, I mean, it just, it may, maybe that, so, okay. Next, I think, in, in terms of process, will be the formal charge that you want to set for the screening committee. And within that charge, you wanna talk about the mission, your expectations of the mission, uh, the nature, uh, nature of the membership, as well as the process that you want the committee to work through, so. Let's, uh, let's go there next.
Great.
Thank you, sir. Doing the wrong, oh, look at that, that's silly, made a top drawer right there, yes, it's, thank, good call. I was just checking to see, Grant, if you were paying attention, you're doing fine, you're, you're holding up over there, it's good.
Just trying to get my salary as an assistant.
Thanks for being here tonight.
So just to prove that I am flexible, that I am a learner, and that I can adapt, I'm gonna lose the hyphen in the, in the header there, I can do that for you.
Yeah.
That's gone, just like that, outta here.
That mistake is gonna be something that is gonna always-
We have to.
We'll deal with it. Ever.
So I, I'm not gonna assault you, but it might be helpful if I just maybe read with you on this. Montpelier Roxbury Board of School Directors charges a superintendent candidate's screening committee with the express authority to guide the initial superintendent screening process. Screening process will begin as defined by the board's search process calendar, it will conclude upon its recommending finalist candidates to the board, parenthetic, or concluding that none shall be as part of this screening process. Screening committee shall work with the VSA consultant to consult, uh, to complete the screening process. Screening committee shall strive to present up to three licensed or licenseable candidates to the board. Whoops, that, let's, let's lose, that meet the search criteria established by the board. Screening committee shall provide information on the finalist candidate's experience, specific skills, related background details to the board following, that's redundant too, isn't it? No, that's all right, to the board finds completion of the initial screening process, which will have a vote on or otherwise rank the finalist, the board retains the finals, retains authority to hire the new superintendent, so. It's meant to give clarity to the members of your screening committee in terms of what their job is, what their job isn't, and, and what the goal of their work is. Keep going.
Yep.
Yes.
It is customary not to have umpteen thousand people on a screening committee because it just doesn't work well with too many people. But it does work better if you can have a cross-section of the organization and, and school community reflected back on, on the committee. So certainly this is negotiable, but my suggestion too is dividing up perhaps a ten-member screening committee, would be a couple of board members. One of whom gets named by you as the chair, one of the two board members gets named by you, the board, as the chair of the screening committee. And the other board member gets named by you as a secretary to the screening committee, so there's a direct link back to the board for reporting and updates, whatever communication you're expecting to hear back from the committee, there's a direct pipeline of communication that way. Two central office administrators, because those are the cats that work most directly, most frequently, most in and out daily with your, your, your superintendent. One building administrator, two teachers, one support staff member, and two individuals to me, and parent community, uh, stakeholder group. So, um, how does ten feel? Let's start there.
It feels viscerally good, although I, I, Mike McCrae's walked through this and I, we may wanna up it a few for, I think generally the purposes of inclusion. I think we have at least, for instance, I think we have at least two building administrators. Uh, in fact, I think we've got maybe five building administrators who want to be on the committee, but I think we can narrow it down to two, I think getting it down to one would be hard. In fact, getting it down to two might even be difficult, I, I know it, I think we can do two, I, I think there are, I think it would be difficult with one.
Well, there are two central office administrators and a building administrator that I-
Oh, okay.
Who is in central office?
Yep, no, I was lobbying those two.
Who else is?
Nope, I think that's good, I think that's good, sorry.
Mary, okay, Mary, right.
The one that's still left is Mary.
Right, that's what I thought, we were, 'cause the other one's bacon.
That's right, that's correct.
Yes.
Oh, okay, then.
So.
Erase that, um.
So it would be Grant, Mary, essentially?
Yeah.
I guess so.
Yeah, it'd be Grant, Mary, and then one at a principal.
And then a principal.
Uh, yeah, I, I think that's, that's plenty.
And, and to be honest, if there was a struggle that both principals felt so strongly, then Mary and I could maybe, there's four of us, and this is-
Yeah, okay.
Or actually five with, so there's five, and this is giving three seats, so I think as long as three is good, I think, you know, we can argue amongst ourselves.
Okay, sorry, I, I was misreading, I, I think we're fine there. I do think we probably want three parents, community members, uh, both for inclusion and also, uh, I was thinking one from Roxbury and two from Montpelier.
Yeah.
Well, I always, unfortunately, do-
I think that's reasonable, 'cause I was having a hard time thinking about the small numbers and like where, how Roxbury's gonna fit in, or a small percentage, what do you want this and that, and, yeah, it would make sense, I think, to have three parent community members to allow some presence for sure.
May I suggest this? I think three's a fine number, go with it. Um, I don't know that I preclude here, um, what that distribution needs to be, I think that when you make the decisions down the road about who these individuals are gonna be, you can figure out those weights and what makes the most sense.
Okay.
Yeah.
And Mike, one thing that's kind of a unique thing for this group is, um, still yet to be determined the collective bargaining units. But if, um, Montpelier obviously is the larger group, Montpelier has three bargaining units, a teacher, an IA specific, and an AFSMI, which is ten custodians. So I know a lot of times we have one for each one of the bargaining units, a representative for each of those.
Yeah.
This would have teachers and support staff, which typically support staff is your other contract, your bargaining unit, which includes everybody, but we have a, two support staff in essence, we have instructional assistants and we have AFSMI. So I don't know if it's worth saying one teacher rep, one IA rep, one AFSMI rep. Or if, I, I'm okay with it like this, but I don't know if that creates any problems. I'm not on a lot of the committees, so I don't know if I didn't typically run.
One approach could be, um, that I suspect each of those three, um, labor groups, um, has some sort of leadership structure. It might, as the board reaches out to various custodial groups, the principals, teachers, maybe reach out to the three union leaders and just say, you know, can you cooperate on a recommended representative representing labor?
I would say that, that those two other, I wouldn't want to do less than two teachers, so I would say use that approach to the two other bargaining units and ask them to provide one person.
You think that would?
Well, I'm really, I'm not actually two bargaining, it's because of the Roxbury.
Two support staff. Got it, got it, got it.
Other, other, right.
We're bargaining, I'm sorry.
Maybe it would be three, 'cause there's a one teachers.
Well, I was debating the issue of two teachers, uh, and it's just a hard, when you have so few people, it's hard to figure out what to do with Roxbury, to be honest.
Right. And I didn't necessarily mean that there would be a, a Roxbury representative, I just meant that there's still those bargaining units involved.
Right, right.
And Roxbury is one of those, it's Washington, it's part of Washington South, only have two bargaining units. So you could do two teacher reps and one support staff rep to be determined by the leadership of AFSMI slash Mesa.
Yeah, that's what I do.
The other, do we want a student on the committee?
I thought about that, um.
My, I would say yes.
I would say yes too, but it, it does add another person.
Then we'd be rounded up to twelve.
Yeah, and I was thinking of setting a limit of twelve and.
Mm-hmm. I think we need a limit.
We don't think bigger than that. Uh, I think we're-
I think we need a limit, yeah, definitely.
Yeah. Then we can.
Well, I think-
Maybe we can call these numbers guidelines, with twelve and absolute, if, you know,
Right, root for.
You know, if both Mary and Grant decide they don't, both don't need to do it, we can, there goes one, add another teacher, or if, you know.
There might be some people that wear two hats too.
Yeah.
I, I also think it'll be very important to have established the calendar and publish it.
Yes.
So if you're gonna be on this committee, you have to be able to show up, and that won't be easy on this timeline, so.
That's a good point.
Uh, I think, you know.
Could be some self-elimination of interest just based on that.
Right, I think that would-
So are we at twelve? Is that where we find ourselves, is?
Yeah.
Are twelve in the committee?
I'm at a twelve, mm-hmm.
Thank you for not going beyond twelve, I really appreciate that because it, it just-
Well, even twelve's gonna be unwieldy, so.
I, yeah, yep. Okay, and before we move off that section, as a board, you'll figure out which two members make the most sense to crossover onto the screening committee, you know? And those two folks will be assigned these two roles.
Roxbury and we'll find, uh, uh, one.
I'm game. So I'm game.
Great, thank you for that. Process, uh, screening committee is authorized to work within the committee. Uh, what? Screening committee is authorized to work within the committee? What?
Yeah, what's up with that? To work within the board or to work within the?
I'll check that in a second.
All right.
With the advice and direction of VSA consultant to receive prepared, distributed, and review materials using electronic resources, and to conduct first round semifinalist candidate interviews. Screening committee members shall agree to keep all applicant information confidential. The board will be responsible for publicly identifying finalists, it will interview, so that becomes your ball to call when you wanna call that ball, and I'll talk to you down the road about that, but the big idea here is that this stays, uh, where it needs to, and, and the reason that's important is that this can be premature disclosure of, um, folks before they reach the finalist stage can be really career debilitating
Yes.
events for folks, so it's just a respectful, professional gesture.
Yep.
Screening committee chair is liaison between, uh, screening committee and the board. Screening committee members shall be, uh, meeting shall be warned and open to the public, however, the screening committee shall review candidate materials and deliberate an executive session complying with open meeting law requirements. Screening committee secretary shall keep meeting minutes and send a copy to the board clerk within five days on each screening committee meeting. I will clean up the language on that, but do you think the breadth of this is sufficient to inform the committee and is translatable to them about your interests and how it is that they'll be doing business? Obviously, I'll be there for all of those sessions, I'll be working hand in hand with the committee chair, uh, in terms of facilitating the meetings and keeping things on track, but in terms of the charge, the charge is an important charge because, as we said earlier, this is where a lot of the heavy lifting gets done early on your behalf. And since it's being done on your behalf, you get to decide how it's being done. Becky, how do you feel about it? You've got some HR background here, is this sort of feel pretty close?
No, I think this is good, this is a good structure.
Okay.
Yeah, I think so too.
Can I just ask how, with them being warned and open meetings, but yet being, um, everything being confidential, I'm just-
How's that? Yeah, what was I meaning? So it's probably the, I guess it's probably like the process, we're meeting on this date, we're going, this, in-
There'll be different functions for the different meetings, uh, for example, the first meeting is, is gonna have nothing whatsoever to do with the applicants. First one's gonna be getting organized, getting the ground rules down, making sure folks understand how to use school spring, uh, going through confidentiality requirements, understanding state law. Second meeting will be an open meeting in which, um, questions, interview questions get defined and so forth. I imagine the third meeting will start an open session and pretty quickly move into executive session, as that will be when we get after the screening of, of, of the paper people, start to make some evaluations, assessments, decisions about who to interview. Those interviews for the next session would be an executive session. Reference checks is an executive session activity, so those are examples of how we would differentiate the activities of the meetings about what falls under the open meeting law requirements for executive session or open session.
It's good.
How are we doing? Good so far?
Good so far.
Do me a favor, set that aside for now, we're gonna come back and visit this again in a second, but before you adopt that, let's talk about exactly what Tina was talking about, and that is the, the calendar, because it's, it's all tied into this, and, uh, and now you get past this one. This is where the rubber hits the road. Um, this is where it gets real, this is where there is not a whole lot of flex. My experience is that screening committees feel abused if you work them on Saturdays and Sundays, so we're gonna try to avoid Saturdays and Sunday meetings with the screening committee, and try to, try to confine it to the work week. Let's note where these dates, um, are some board meetings that we wanna avoid those nights because you've got some membership on your boards that are serving on screening committee, so that would be, as I understand it, May second, May sixteenth, and June sixth. So that would be, as I understand it, May second, May sixteenth, and June sixth. Does that sound familiar? Those upcoming meeting dates?
Yep.
Okay. You got Memorial Day as a holiday on the twenty eighth of May and you've got your graduation on Friday, June sixteenth, or fifteenth, rather. My interest for you, on your behalf, is to get this done before graduation. That's really where my head is on this. So again, it's a matter of reverse engineering, working backwards from that sort of end date and then rolling things forward. So here's the timeline as I would see it. Um, tomorrow, based on what you've done tonight and thank you for what you've done tonight, we begin advertising tomorrow. Uh, we get the recruitment activity started and we work between, um, Heather and the VSB a office to just hit, uh, hit the ground running with, with materials tomorrow. I would hope that by May fourth, not later than May fourth, you would be able to convene. Be a special meeting, I imagine, unless you could do it on May second, I mean, that's your call, whether you can work it into your agenda that night or not. And name names to the screening committee. So that means you've gotta have some way of doing that and we wanna talk about what that looks like. You wanna have some process by which you're putting the word out that, by the way, we've got this thing called a screening committee, by the way, it's gonna meet on these dates, by the way, we'd love to have you consider sitting on it. And by the way, here's how you let us know you're interested in doing just that. So that would be May fourth, uh, operational deadline for you naming the committee. The committee would, uh, be named by then and the first meeting would be on Monday, May seventh. I would imagine, well, I would, I would prefer, and I think a lot of folks might prefer this be a late afternoon meeting, like maybe, I don't know, what time's school get out, three o'clock, three thirty? What time's your?
Three.
Three, right, that's, that's three.
School's here, I think it's three.
So travel from Roxbury, we got parents, we got working folks, we got a whole bunch of folks, maybe start like at four o'clock, four o'clock meeting.
And Roxbury ends at.
Two thirty.
Two twenty, yeah.
Yeah, so it can.
So maybe even three thirty could work then. So late afternoon is what I'm thinking for most screening committee meetings. And that ought to be clear too, Tina, in terms of what folks.
Yeah.
Check their calendars, availability, not just for dates but for times as well. Uh, Thursday, May tenth, the screening committee will meet a second time that week, uh, and that's the, uh, meeting at which they develop interview questions and talk about the interview protocols and just get their ducks in a row. Because at the end of that next weekend, May thirteenth, which is three weekends from now, is when the applications would close. So I'd love to give you four weeks, but frankly, I can't, we're gonna work with three and that's what we've got to work with and folks know it. What's most important, I'll bet Becky can back this up, is for working folks out there, they like to file applications on the weekends for the most part, that's when they can get after.
That's a lot of work.
Yeah, it's a lot of work to do it and, uh, that's like an organize their thinking, organize their time and I like the fact that we can get three weekends in before May thirteenth.
Yep.
On the fourteenth, the day after, is when the screening committee meets the third time. And they're gonna be screening the completed applications, starting to make some assessments, determine what semifinalists they want us to meet as not just paper people but flesh and blood real people. We then get those folks in here the following week for interviews before the screening committee. Screening committee's gonna take roughly a week until about May twenty ninth to do its due diligence on reference checks with those folks. And make the final decision on the twenty ninth, um, who they're gonna be forwarding to you. And then you come out of temporary hibernation on this project and you plug right back in again and it's gonna be your time then to deal with the finalists that are remanded to you by the screening committee. What that means is, um, you'd wanna have a meeting probably the week of the twenty eighth, the holiday week.
Yeah.
In which you're doing your final planning around your big night with the finalists. Will, you and I would, would sit down, um, we'll figure out a schedule, we'll figure out a protocol, we'll figure out how you want the committee forums run. You're gonna figure out who's gonna play host and hostess to the various finalists as we're showing them the district and how we're getting dinner reservations made and all those levels of details will be taken care of that night. So that the following week, um, we get after your interviews of the finalists.
Okay.
Not a whole lot of time for a wingroom here, but we can do it.
If you can get it advertised tomorrow, I think that's a key part of.
I agree.
Yeah.
Yep.
Takes no time to put it up on the school spring.
Exactly.
So we have our de, obligation deadline of May thirteenth. Is there anything happening in essentially New England, school-wise, are there any VSB a meetings, are there any superintendent meetings, is there anything brewing in the education calendar?
On that weekend?
No, just between now and the thirteenth, that we should target to get our vacancy announcement to?
Yes, and, and the VSA office has that calendar, the VSB a office has that calendar and, uh, yeah.
So it's, so they're not on here right now, but.
Right.
Those special events, we will have our announcement at.
For example, um, I have, um, an academy date with a handful of aspiring superintendents meeting the first week of May.
Okay.
Good.
So just a long.
So as, as an example, one of many examples in which we will absolutely have this out there in front of people. Yep. Frankly, they'll have before then, but. So.
It's good, yeah.
Good.
It's, it's, it's tight, it's tidy, it's real, it's, we're, we're moving, we're, we're not gonna be, not gonna spend a lot of time and in between, we're gonna be moving along pretty quickly here.
That's so funny.
Yeah.
What would be wicked helpful is if we could at least pinpoint what date during the week of June fourth or June eleventh you want to do this.
A special coordinating.
Well, a special board, there, there are two special board meetings, um, one is the organizational meeting.
Right.
For the big night and the other's the big night. Less important to me at this minute is the special board meeting the week of the twenty eighth, but if you're ready to decide both dates, that's great. What's far more important to me is that I'd be ready to communicate with applicants, clear your calendar on this date in case you're a finalist because that's the night you're gonna have your chance. And the sooner I can put that information into folks' hands, the happier everybody is and the more, the more smoothly it works.
So we have, um, school board meetings scheduled for June sixth.
Correct. And I assume you've got a regular agenda that night and don't need to double up and.
No.
I wouldn't recommend double, I'd recommend dedicating your attention just to this for whatever date you set. So Tina, the sixth is out, is what I'm hearing you say? Yeah, yeah.
Well, I think I'm at, uh, the.
First half of June?
No, uh.
Well, in the week of the eleventh, you wanna be making up your mind then, if we have it like as late as the June thirteenth, that's really to turn that right. Maybe we will have the perfect candidate by then, I don't know, maybe we will.
So, so on that day when all three candidates come.
Yep.
I wish I was on the sixth.
Big day.
Yep.
And in the evening, we'll do more of a formal interview.
Yep, one at a time, uh, they'll be scheduled for sixty to seventy-five minutes each, you'll have some time in between each one to sort of process what you just learned and heard and thought and so forth. And you'll see number two, then you'll see number three, and then you'll be spending some time deliberating about all of that.
So the idea is at the end of that night, we've picked our, or ranked our candidates.
Unless you have good reasons not to, yes. Unless you need more information, unless you wanna vet something, unless you just need more time to sleep on something, then yes, that would be decision point time.
Well, Jim, if you were gonna be here the sixth, suppose we did two deadly nights in a row and did the seventh, Thursday the seventh.
I think the sixth, I've, I, I'm actually going the sixth through the ninth.
Oh, good, 'cause I'm going the seventh, I can't do a seventh anyway.
So fourth, fifth, or any, any day of the eleventh works.
I prefer the fourth.
I just wouldn't get it done on the fourth, honestly.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just keep just marching it forward.
If we have people traveling, it's from work.
Well, and if they're traveling too, that's a good point, they're missing one long day from work rather than in the middle of the week.
Right.
Yeah, so.
It's the, and you're going the sixth through the eighth?
Yeah.
Okay, well, maybe the fourth.
And I can be available if, I'm, might be able to switch my flight from the sixth to the seventh, no, I don't think so. We, now that's our annual meeting.
Sounds like the fourth.
I'm hearing the fourth, that works for me.
Yeah.
What's also, even though it's early in that window, it's fine, um, it's actually good for a couple of reasons. One, uh, should you be able to make a decision early on like that, it just gives your, 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 your choice, uh, that much more time to figure out transition and separating from contract and getting into your contract and all those good things. But secondly, the fact that you've declared that date of the fourth, um, you can do some advanced promotion of it even if you don't yet know who those finalists are. You can certainly get the word out that there will be forums at such, such location, at such, such time to meet the candidates and so forth, so, uh, that's really good news. So the fourth, bingo.
Let's do it.
Very nice, very nice.
I would assume you're gonna want the board to meet to go with the logistics early the week of the twenty eighth then as opposed to late the week of the twenty eighth because that's not giving them much time between planning the logistics and it being on us.
Let's plan to meet the twentieth, how about that?
Well, that's Monday.
That's Memorial Day.
That's a holiday.
That's a holiday.
How about the thirtieth, which is a Wednesday?
Yeah, 'cause the twenty ninth is when the screening committee likely will make their last.
Right.
So do the thirtieth.
Yeah, I'm on the thirtieth, third.
And you don't have to wait for the screening committee, I mean, frankly, you can meet earlier than the week of the twenty eighth, you wanna meet the week of the eight, no, I'm sorry, the week of the, um, twenty first is even, is even possible.
The logistics wouldn't necessarily change based on the candidates.
Right.
Well, we're sort of in the Wednesday, we're sort of in the Wednesday run, that's why I was, I mean, we have a board meetings on Wednesday.
Correct, exactly. I see.
That's why I was thinking maybe the thirtieth.
Well, I'm, I'm gone again.
Oh.
What about the twenty third?
But I'm, I'm there the whole week, the twenty first, the.
The twenty.
I'm afraid I'm jammed up twenty third, twenty fourth, I do apologize, those are nights that I couldn't help you.
Twenty second?
I could help you that night, yep.
You'll do that?
Yeah.
That works for me.
I was gonna.
I'm gonna go home and put this on.
If we do, after six, I'm good.
I was gonna try to negotiate him to change that meeting on the twenty first to the twenty second, if I'm gonna do this. Of the, of the.
The screening committee.
Screening committee meeting, 'cause I'm in a wedding on that weekend.
Hmm.
Is there, it, it, this is, border's unirrational, but I'll go there anyway. On that meeting you have scheduled Monday for the twenty first, is there any chance of doing it Tuesday, the twenty second?
Or Wednesday, the twenty third?
No, yes.
Okay.
Yes, for.
Yes, I could do the twenty second with you.
With, uh, that one that you've already got scheduled, the one that you've got scheduled on the twenty first, can you do it the twenty second, is what I'm saying.
Yes.
And potentially, we could double up on meetings that day.
Yes.
And just do the logistic planning and.
Do, I mean, the screening committee will meet at four and then the board meet at seven or something like that.
Yes, yes.
So, let's, let's, let's just, that's, that's a really important question. Whatever date we pick, whether we stick with the twenty first or move to the twenty second, it will depend on how many folks the screening committee chooses to interview about how long that meeting is and what time it needs to start. So if you still wanna hold a board meeting or what's going on that night, it's a.
Well, we were thinking of scheduling our logistics.
Oh, right.
The logistics meeting.
Logistics meeting, yeah, thank you. Let's just pretend that they had five folks to interview, that's gonna easily be a five hour committee meeting.
Yeah.
So it, it, just mean they start earlier in the day, that's all we need for that group.
Right.
That's all. Yeah, day long.
So as, yeah, I'm gonna wanna modify this a little bit for your clarity as you figure out how you want to get the word out about the screening committee opportunities. About not just the days but the windows of time in which they might likely meet. I think that might be further useful to your.
Right.
Folks' consideration. So let's revisit what we just talked about. Definitely June fourth is when you're seeing your finalists.
Yep, yep.
You're taking the week of the twenty eighth off as a board.
Yeah.
And that activity about the logistics for hosting finals and so forth is going to occur on the evening of the twenty second, am I correct about that?
Yep.
That's the target.
Seven PM?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So that, so that would mean if the other, the screening committee is meeting, it's just starting earlier in the day.
Yep.
Is that what it's, we're thinking of? Okay.
And it won't start any earlier than it has to, but it's gonna have to start as early as it needs to.
Yeah, yeah, makes sense. Thank you for doing that.
So, yeah. It's, that's, I'm happy to do it, I'm happy I can do it.
So May fourteenth is a meeting and instead of May twenty first, we're definitely saying it's May twenty second?
That is correct. Instead of week of June fourth or June eleventh, it is June fourth.
And the seven o'clock meeting is an organizational meeting of the board? What is that meeting again? Remind me, that's the, um.
The meeting in advance of when you see the finalists?
Yeah.
Yeah, you're, you're gonna get set up that night, you are going to, um, check in on your school spring savvy skills. You're gonna figure out what the detailed schedule looks like for yourselves and for the candidates that day. You're gonna figure out who's gonna play host and hostess as candidates are showing the district.
For June fourth.
For, for.
For June fourth.
For June fourth, yes, yeah.
Okay, I'm just.
It's, it's the organization for June fourth, is what I think.
June fourth, yeah.
Yep, yep, we're on the same page. How are we doing, sports fans?
Doing good.
We're doing good.
This is doable.
She's been very helpful.
I'm, I'm glad.
It's very helpful. Yeah.
Lisa, you're signing heavily over there.
Um, I'm just looking at, um.
Your calendar?
The list and the, define the breadth of the advertisement, we basically decided school spring and some of the other three.
Yes.
That's checked off.
Yes.
Yeah, well, I have some suggestions.
Oh, sure.
Yeah. But I think it would be not high cost.
And I think most people in this public school community are familiar with school spring and just as, as an indicator, I lived in Massachusetts when I applied for the job that Dr. Dewey hired me for twelve years ago. So I, that, I was definitely out of state in the, I went through that, so I think school spring does reach out.
Okay, good.
It was a wonderful thing James Fitzpatrick did.
Isn't it though? Yeah, he, he, he did right by us all and by himself.
Steven.
I'm sorry, I'm there when there might be, uh, the community meeting, so to see the candidates or if, you know, you have the candidates or.
It, it'll be the same day as the interviews, I mean, June fourth?
Yeah.
How it tends to look that day, if, if you choose to sort of do it the traditional way, is that, uh, we try to have, um, the finalists sort of pass on the night a bit so that they're not in the same place at the same time, so when somebody's visiting one school, somebody's visiting a different school, they're going to different restaurants or at different times, they're staggered obviously for the interviews that night. It's, 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 uh, separate opportunities.
It's a logistical nightmare, but it's sort of fun.
Yeah, and you're right, you know, um, community comes out and, 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 and knows where to, to meet the candidate, it's, it tends to be rather informal. It tends to be a chance to greet, meet and hear a few words and ask a few questions and that sort of thing, to sort of get impressions of, of the folks and be an opportunity for, for folks who attend the forums to just leave you some, some feedback for you to consider that evening when you do meet the, the finalists yourselves, so they'll, they'll, that, that's up.
And oftentimes.
What about time?
Yeah, that's, that's what we gotta work on, yeah, yeah.
I was gonna say, often during the day, there's a time that each candidate during the day, their, uh, community members could come in and work the candidates too.
Right, right.
But we just haven't decided the time yet, but it could happen during the day as well as the meeting at night.
And, you know, if it's three, that's one set of scheduling dynamics, if it's two, it's a different set of scheduling dynamics. So it's, it's dependent on what sort emerges through the process that we will work with.
Did you need to go back to the.
The charge, yeah, yeah, I do, thanks. So the reason I just paused in the charge was for that conversation that we just had around the details of the screening committee's dates and times and efforts and so forth. So I wouldn't mind, um, drafting some content for you to share. You'll know your pipelines, you'll know how to reach your administrative group, you'll know how to reach your teacher group, you'll know how to reach your unions, you'll know how to reach your, your families and parents and community and so forth. But what I can do is I can give you the gist of what the screening committee work is all about, when it is the screening committee will be working, what it is they'll be doing, roughly what time of day it is they'll be meeting. So that you can then fold that into your outreach to those groups, is that, is that reasonable?
You know, we talked about the time for all of these and you said three thirty and I'm thinking four o'clock allows somebody who might work to take just a little bit of time off.
The end of the day.
And come to a meeting, so four o'clock I think is, is better.
Yeah.
I'm on board, yep, yep.
I was saying to Mike that we, I thought we had a good process for the merger committee, for people that wanted to be on the merger committee. Remember, they wrote a letter and, um, came to the board, so I think if we open it up and there's some process like that.
To write a letter or something.
For the communities.
For the community, for the. For the community of folks, for the more of the staff side of things, there's less of that kind of procedure needed, or?
Right, I was assuming...
Yeah, I think we also, I think we're gonna have to coordinate with the, or the union reps and...
And the administrative team.
And the administrative team.
Teachers.
And, you know, and hopefully C Q will help us with this. I think we wanna make sure that it's not just usual folks that they, you know, that we get, get a representative group on...
And we are in a tight timeline, so we need to make sure that we're getting somebody who can commit more than just the dates, but who's willing to spend the time and outside time to get involved and to go with us through this.
Yep.
That's our process.
So with vacation ending tomorrow, it's probably logical that you'd be able to sort of ramp up and get this sort of news and invitations out maybe early next week?
Yep.
And then you're deciding on this one again? Is it the second?
Either the second or we'll need a special meeting, but I'm hoping we can squeeze it in on the second, I hope we can do a lot of...
Let's just put it on the agenda and do it.
Yeah, I think we can.
Make ourselves do it.
Yeah, I think, I think people would rather stay extra time on the second than...
I agree.
Things all are different.
Different meeting, okay.
So if you can pump this out to your different constituents, Monday-ish the twenty-third, that'll give folks a week plus, a few days to get back to you with their letters of intent or interests or however you wanna cast that.
I'll just throw out a little, little problem, and that is the meeting on the second is due to be in Roxbury. And I don't know whether you're gonna ask community to respond and the board's gonna talk to them or not, but we need to think about that.
Okay, we do think about that.
I mean, maybe we switch, maybe we go to Roxbury on the sixteenth or something.
How do the Roxburg feel about that?
I don't think it's gonna make a difference in terms of audience one way or the other, and so I think... Right, nobody, nobody in Roxbury would feel slighted if we switched the date. But they would anticipate we'd have more, more fewer folks present on the second, so it probably makes sense.
Are you expecting to interview folks or are you expected to make decisions based on their paper invitation, response?
I don't know, that's what I was asking.
Right, do they need to show up to the meeting?
Do they?
Yeah, I mean, I guess my sense is we probably wanna have most, well, I was gonna say we might wanna have a lot of the pre-work kind of done, but the opportunity for people come, to come if we do, you know, if we are in a situation where, you know, we've got a bunch of letters and we might wanna just have, you know, fifteen, twenty minutes where people come up and introduce themselves and kind of expand on why they wanna be on the committee.
Right, which is what we did for the merger committee, not that only, I'd say, very limited, you have two minutes or something, but, you know, it gives you the opportunity to say something.
And then we would decide in open meeting?
In an... Not in executive session, I think, yeah.
An executive session.
Yeah.
We did it fairly efficiently last time, that's the only reason I'm thinking we can do it this time, don't you think?
Yeah, especially if we give it some thought beforehand and, you know...
Right, so you'd need to think, if that's, right, what's the deadline for getting your paperwork in?
So what is the deadline?
Who do they send it to, or where does it go?
Who do they send it to, where does it go?
Yeah. What's expected within that letter? Is it a paragraph, is it just a name, I mean, what do you want from them?
I mean, I think we can even start getting stuff out now.
Uh...
Yeah, just on Facebook, you know, some of the...
So you'll send us a draft of...
I'll give you some content to draw from and you can punch it up beyond that as you need to or want to. If I got that to you by Saturday morning, is that reasonable?
Yeah.
Okay. Saturday morning means eleven fifty-nine A M., is that right?
You bet.
Saturday, Saturday-ish. Yeah, and then we can get it out, you know, and maybe ask people to get us something by the twenty-seventh, I know that's quick, but that'll give us a little time to review it, have, you know, before the meeting on the second.
Or how about...
So remind me.
The twenty-ninth maybe?
Yeah.
Well, I was gonna say, or the thirtieth, so that you have it on, you've given them the weekend, another weekend.
Okay.
I got it, yeah.
Well, let's, let's say the twenty-ninth, so that way...
Okay.
By midnight, whatever.
By midnight.
Yeah.
If you want us to testify.
That way that gives us Monday to review it, so we're not, because we say the thirtieth, we'll get some folks in, you know, at eleven fifty-nine.
Oh, right, I'm looking, right.
Right.
Right. I lost track of what week I was in, thanks, right.
On the thirtieth.
So remind me, we committed to a twelve-person screening committee.
Yeah.
But we didn't commit to the distribution, so we'll decide that on the second also, right?
I thought we decided.
Well, I think we...
I think we roughly decided, but...
Right, but we haven't, we didn't commit to how many community, et cetera.
I think Jim's request was three community.
Three, and a student.
Yeah, I think we do want three community.
It was, the question was about the teachers and the support staff.
Right, and do we want any students?
Yeah.
It seemed like twelve is gonna cover that little bit.
Yeah.
I think one student would be lovely.
Yeah.
So are we saying the twenty-ninth is the deadline for community members to respond as well as the student, the teacher representative and the support staff representative, that's the deadline for...
Well, I'm assuming that the, maybe this isn't correct, so stop me, but I'm assuming that the board's not gonna decide on, from a whole list of teachers, that that could be an administrative team decision for the teachers and the, and we're asking the two support staffs to give us somebody?
I was thinking it would be the same approach, that perhaps it's an email from Jim that Heather can forward to the M E A saying, would you forward two names to serve on this committee?
Oh, perfect, yeah.
Yeah.
I just meant, we aren't spending time at the board, we're just...
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
Yes.
And are they, the same thing with student council, is it?
Um, I didn't think about this.
I would ask Mike.
I'm not, I think we're on a custom wire, the student council, I mean, for instance, we might want someone from the Rachel Justice Alliance to be on, and I don't know if there's overlap with the student council. So some sort of, I would, probably working with Mike.
I was gonna say, I'd ask Mike to do this.
Yeah.
So Mike can designate that question.
Those are different Mike than me, right?
Yes. Mike McGrath.
We have a lot of Mike in this.
We have a lot of Mike, cool, it's a great name.
Yeah, so if, if Jim, you could like draft some kind of an email that Heather can send out, that would address the teacher rep, the support staff rep. We can talk to Mike McGrath about the student rep. The central office and building administrators can discuss amongst themselves.
Yeah, you guys can work that out, yeah.
And then you'll just decide the board members, so really, the only thing you're gonna have to sort through is give you this submit from the community.
And just to leverage the opportunity, in case there is an article or story coming out at tonight's meeting, is there a place that the article can direct people to, to learn about this? Where would a central repository of this information be?
I hesitantly say that of course could be on the website, but we have a six, a history of problems with that. So what do we wanna say?
Do I hear Facebook, did I hear Front porch forum, did I hear other venues that...
Actually, honestly, I should say that, we should be able to get this up on the website.
We should be able to get something on the website, this is a pretty important thing for the district, yeah.
In a pinch, I have taken some notes on how to post stuff onto the website, so if you're talking about perhaps what, some version of what Mike sent you on Saturday morning and tweaking it to, to put it onto a document that explains what we're looking for. If you, once that's a final product, if you send it to me, I can get it posted on the school, on the MPS B T website under Board of School Directors even though it's not real intuitive for Montpelier Roxbury to look there, that's probably what we can do.
But if you're directed there.
So, would Monday be a reasonable time for folks to look for that? Is that what you're saying, is by Monday?
I think so.
Yeah.
Monday?
Yeah.
As soon as Jim takes it to me, I can get it posted. And I will be in on this.
He's quite able to, a place where he can...
We could also, and we could also at the same time, send a notice to the Times article.
Great.
Do you need action on the charter at this point, or charge at this point, or what?
With...
Do we need to, do we approve it, just, do we need to approve it, should we approve?
I think we should, yeah, I think you should have a charge that's enough to do that.
Let's do it, let's do it.
Yeah.
So, with appropriate edits, is this the charge that we're formalizing?
Uh, yeah, we need a motion.
I move we adopt the charge as presented.
And edited.
And edited.
With twelve being the magic number?
Yeah.
Yep, okay.
Second by Lisa. All is in favor?
Aye.
Supposed? And did that include the schedule or do we have to separately approve the schedule?
It includes the schedule.
It includes the schedule.
Just while it's...
And I will amend that schedule as well, just for your consumption.
Thank you. It's a lot of work, Mike, we appreciate it.
I, yeah, I'm, I'm... Super helpful.
Yes.
I'm thrilled we're at the point we are right now because it matters, and I think you've really done good work tonight and I appreciate it very much. Nothing else that I think I need from you at this point? I'll, I will not be a part of your process of selecting membership to the committee, but obviously I'll need to know who you've assigned to the committee. And we'll figure out a way to communicate that, just so I know who I'm working with when we do sit down with the screening committee for the first time.
So for the, I'd like to clarify, for the board members particularly that are not here.
Yes.
You said that the representatives from the board will be on the screening committee, will the board see you again?
Yes, I'll be back with you for those last two meetings.
Okay.
I'll help you get organized in terms of ramping up for that night and I'll be with you that night.
Yep.
I'll be a bit invisible unless you're on the screening committee, but trust that I'll be working on your behalf to get her done. And the board's comfortable naming two of your own to this committee as well?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll draw straws for the...
Okay.
Montpelier piece.
The long straws, we get the long straws, not the short ones, the long ones.
Yeah, I wanna, I know the only one who has firmly expressed she does not wanna be on it is Bridgette. There's plenty of other things to do.
Oh, since she did not want to.
I scared her off.
Uh, no, Bridgette's been wading through plenty, so she decided that she could bow it on this one.
Well, folks, this is exciting, we're shooting for the best here. I know you understand that it's, there's no guarantees in what we're about to do, but we're gonna give it the college try and get you that next superintendent, that's the grand plan here.
Yeah, no, I'm excited about this process and I appreciate this great work. I speak for others, and I say we, I don't think we'd be able to do this without your help, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome. See you, see you.